Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the get my notes here, September 26, 2023 council meeting. We are reconvening from closed session, and there is nothing to report out from closed session at this time. We do have a quorum. Could I get a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Meyer?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Orlemans?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Here.
Mayor Bryant?
Here. If you could join with me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we open public comments, I just want, I was made aware that there has been a rumor going around regarding the city and the city council's plans on turning the senior center facility into a youth facility. I just want you to know that that is absolutely false. There's no truth to it whatsoever. And I guess I can stop there. I could go on and on, but there's, it's absolutely not true. And so I appreciate the concern and the community support for the senior center and the activities that are so valuable there. But if you've heard a rumor that there's going to be any decision by the city or city council to close the senior center and turn it into a youth facility, that is 100% not true. And so at this time, I will turn this to Margaret for an open comments, public comments.
We'll take public comments in the chambers followed by Zoom comment. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak under public comment. If you're in person, please file a speaker card. At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Items listed under presentations, informational reports are on the consent calendar. Request for future agenda items, new requests. Please save your comments for any other items that are on the agenda for that part of the meeting. Remarks will be limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. While we encourage your comments, state law prevents the city council from discussing items that are not on their meeting agenda. If appropriate, staff will follow up on them with you directly. As a note, a speaker may or may not, may not allocate his or her time to another speaker. And I received zero written public comments for this portion of the agenda. I have 11 speaker cards in person and currently one hand raised in Zoom. I'll call on Lilian Pierce first.
Well, let me be the first to say Merry Christmas. I'm here to thank the city council and the city staff for your continued support of the Community Chest. I think you have a brochure in front of you that has our dates of sorting and packing the food and the distribution of the food, which is December 15th and 16th at Brentwood Elementary School. We also, what's not listed there is the dates of the toy sorting and packing, which is December 12th and 14th in the former US Print Building behind the Brentwood PD. And all of our registration dates are on there in times for the community, for the senior center, for people to come and register to receive a basket. So I just wanted to say thank you.
I'm sorry, Lil, since you do have a little bit more time, what is the web? If you could sing, that would be, your dulcet tones would be greatly appreciated. What is the website for?
It's B R C C H E S T. It's B R C C chest.org. It's on your brochure.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks, Joel.
The next speaker is Danny Norman, followed by Denise Duran.
Good evening. I had a revelation coming here tonight. We're on Facebook Live. So unlike Zoom, who a whole lot of residents don't use, everybody knows how to use YouTube. The importance, you will now be held accountable for your actions in real time. You may not address comments and issues, but the world will see what it is you support or oppose. They'll have the opportunity, they, the audience, will have the opportunity to chime in in real time. So let's talk about kids smoking and drinking in school. I hope you will all commit tonight, would be nice, with working with the Liberty School District to keep their feet on the fire and do something. To believe that all the admins of all the schools in our district are doing their best for the children. You are wrong. You are wrong. Let's talk about the 15-minute cities. wrong. Let's talk about the 15-minute cities. Audience, go look it up. Go to your electric, elected officials. Go to our neighborhood voices and other sites who are trying to put a ballot on the measure, or ballot on the 2024 cycle. I go to folks like our council women, Mendoza and Meyer, and they keep me and others abreast. If you don't want to have our town look like a lower-middle-income city just because folks like Sino want to make millions of dollars, please go to your folks. I'm not talking about just Brentwood. I'm talking about everyone in California. Let's talk about city government and the lack of control. You need to hold the city manager into account. You actually just approved a raise. Someone asked me if I was going to come here tonight and talk about, and I was, why am I going to waste my time? You guys are going to do what you guys are going to do. He's going to do what he's going to do. But now, on YouTube, there are folks who will hear in future conversations, I'll go into great detail, and you will be held responsible. Good thing I don't have five minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Denise Duran, followed by Mary Kohler.
Good evening, council members and staff. So glad to be here. I missed you guys. I was on my anniversary getaway last time. So I wanted to take a moment to just say thank you so much for your support and the city's support with regard to La Grande Fiesta. It was a fantastic event, and it was absolutely phenomenal to once again see generations upon generations celebrating what makes the Hispanic culture so beautiful, the similarities, as well as some of those unique, a little bit of the uniqueness of each, of each country. It was just terrific. I want to say thank you to our police, Chief Herbert and the staff. It was great to see their presence. They got along with everybody. Everybody loves our police. And as I understand, we behaved well. So thank you, City of Brentwood and beyond. And I wanted to touch base on a little story with regard to La Grande Fiesta. I had one of our youth come up, and she was so blown away with One Day at a Time's participation with the car show, that she said, wow, I would love to learn more about these classic cars. I'm so into street photography, and I would love to do like a documentary and submit that to the Brentwood Press. And just to be able to say that when we put on events like this, we're actually creating opportunities for our youth to explore their creativity that we don't even know how it's going to touch them. So I just, again, want to say thank you for that opportunity. And again, thank you to Tom Gregory for your support and helping us get to where we got to. I also want to say a huge thank you to the Rotarians for their Beer Craft Festival. It was another great opportunity to bring businesses and community together. And I'd like to say a thank you to the Economic Development Department for putting out what is this new program that if you are, if you are a business and you work from home and you want a little change of pace, on Mondays and Wednesdays, you can go to the city office and connect with other business owners. It's a fantastic opportunity, Mondays and Wednesdays, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Great way to just change pace, meet other professionals, and see what can be created, because it's about collaboration. And moving into what the Brentwood Chamber has coming up, we have a mixer, let me start with a ribbon cutting that's coming up at Westmont on October 17th, always the third Thursday of the month, and a mix, the, let me try that again, ribbon cutting on October 17th at American Family Care, which is a new urgent care at the streets of Brentwood. Really nice, really nice family that wants to move to the area as well. The mixer is at Westmont on October 19th. And we have Hometown Halloween, which you can learn all about at BrentwoodChamber.com. And please.
The speaker's timer had expired. The next speaker is Mary Kohler, followed by Rosa Chang.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Mary Kohler. I'm a resident of Brentwood and a participant of the Brentwood Senior Activities Center. I was here two weeks ago to share with you my concerns regarding the operations of the senior center, and due to time restraints, I was not able to say everything I wanted to convey to you. I will, today, I'm here to share with you additional information and give you an update of what has transpired since my participation during the last meeting. It took a lot of courage for me to speak up on behalf of my seniors, because I was fearful that by speaking up, I would suffer retaliation at some level and possibly face the same fate that bestowed Ms. Alvarez and Mr. Robbie Myers. However, I felt if I lose my job because I tried to make things better for my senior family, so be it, because I believe I have the right to speak on these issues, since I'm a Brentwood resident and a senior myself. I am not, nor was I ever, speaking on behalf of my employer. Unfortunately, my fears have become a reality, and I have been retaliated against for speaking out. This is a prime example of what the city does to people who try to speak up or question the city's activities. This week, I was informed by my employer that I heavily damaged the relationship between my agency and the city for speaking up. I believe an apology letter, which unbeknownst to me, was sent to my, was sent by my employer to you regarding my comments at the last council meeting. I would like to say that I'm not apologizing for what I shared with you all. I would only like to apologize to those who thought I was in any way representing the agency I worked for. Let me be perfectly clear, I was not. This week, I saw the recreation supervisor position posted for hire, and I'm left wondering who's going to hold the former supervisor Amanda Chaney and the department director Bruce Mulder accountable for the declining state of the senior center. It's interesting how staff can create a mess of a program and be moved to a different program without any accountability or consequences. It seems like the city has a double standard issue with its employees and has developed a negative reputation for how it treats its employees. Sadly, since I spoke up, I'm being scrutinized at work, and my employer just informed me, they will not be holding my job until I recover from medical leave. As a result, I will not have a job unless they have another similar position in the future, which is highly unlikely. Please do not let my sacrifice be in vain. Please address all the.
The speaker's timer has expired. The next speaker is Rosa Chang, followed by Rosa Gascione.
My name's Rosa Chan. I'm a Brentwood resident for 20 years. I'm a longtime member and joined senior centers since 2009. I'm a very active member and participate in many programs from play to pool to place to paint, crochet, knitting, play Mahjong, chess, line dance, folklorico dance. I worked with Olivia side by side for many holiday decorations. Now our new recreation supervisor is Amanda. I don't even know who she is, and I've never met her. I'm at the center Monday through Friday. Olivia is a hardworking person, has passion for her job, a great liaison between city and center. I feel a big difference after her departure. Our ice cream social and annual barbecue attract many of our seniors. It's not that we don't have enough participants. It is because our leader does not have good programs like scrapbook, jewelry making, singing class, which will attract a lot of different age group. We live together, we live longer and have more active cases than our, our parents' age. We have seniors 85 to 90 years old in my dancing group, line dance group. I used to have many programs going on all the time. Since Olivia left, the atmosphere has changed. There is lack of leadership. No one oversee to develop new program and even maintain the old program. We used to have monthly special lunch, holiday themed lunch. We don't even have a single demile this year. No fall prevention, no, no fire safety, no senior fraud, no AARP presentation, no update hiccup. All we had this year is a senior resource event. Sadly, it's not even advertised until two days before the event. All they had is multiple vendors promoting their senior housing care home, which our seniors do not have the financial means to utilize the services. Our senior center lack of leadership, mistakenly remove value stuff, staff, and inexperienced young untrained person put on the front desk as the order taker. They cannot relate to our seniors. They don't know how to attract new members like Eleonora and Robbie did. We need a recreation supervisor like Olivia, who is not only bilingual, but also has vision and passion to put our seniors at top priority, to not to cut our program to accommodate another use. We need a leader who can be accountable for our seniors, who is experienced, highly motivated, and energetic. We can proudly call our senior center a home away from home. You all one day can be seniors. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rosa Gascione, followed by John Gascione.
Good evening. My name is Rosa Gascione. I am a resident of Brentwood. Just in case, I'm here to ask you to please do not remove the senior center from its present location and do not eliminate the Mexican folkloric class. We are presently 60 members in this group, and we are represented by many ethnicities. Hispanics in Brentwood are about 25% of the entire population. You cannot ignore us. We collaborate with the city's festivities. We need representation. As you know, the city of Brentwood has seven large, important, active, living senior communities, four summer sets, Trilogy, Barcelona, and Kindred and Balfour. We seniors have been paying taxes longer than any age group people and continue paying taxes now. In Mexico and other countries, senior citizens get 50% reduction in their property taxes after age 55. We are not asking for you to reduce our taxes, but we want to make sure that we are treated fairly and with respect. Besides, the senior programs that are provided at the senior center are not entirely free. We pay a yearly membership fee of $25 each. Many of the programs provided at the senior center are done by volunteers free of charge. The folkloric dance, the line dance, the painting class, et cetera. We pay 10% to 15% for the Boogie Night monthly dances. It is not free either. The present location of the senior center at Balfour and Griffith is convenient for most seniors. It is centrally located, close to all the senior communities. Please leave the senior center where it is and bring back Olivia, Robbie, and Mary. She's our activities director, and she was doing a great job for 23 years. She knows what the needs are in our senior community. She listens, and she cares. Why change something that has been working just fine? You need to keep in mind diversity, representation, and inclusion. Don't forget. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is John Gascione, followed by Jose Panito.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council and city staff. My name is John Gascione. You just heard my wife, Rosa, speak. We moved to Brentwood about two and a half years ago, and soon after that, we got introduced to the senior center, which we're actively members of, and we both dance in a ballet folklorico group there. When we first walked into the senior center, we were greeted by none other than the three people who were laid off. And I'm asking myself, why? They weren't devils in disguise, because they're too kind and caring. And you can ask any other senior that goes there who can tell you that. Whatever happened, I recommend to you, Mr. City Manager, to step back, take a second look at the facts before the lawyers move in and the lawsuits start flying. Clarify the matter with the fired employees and find a solution. Reinstate them with back wages. A lawsuit for discrimination of any kind might be costly to the city and ultimately the taxpayers. You are setting up our senior center for failure with movements like this on staff. Who will be accountable for that when a failure happens? And city council members, I implore you to keep tabs on the city business, because it's getting ugly. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jose Panito, followed by Sandra Smith.
Good evening. My name is Jose Panito, and along with my wife, we are for the place to paint at the senior center. It's a place where seniors can come and paint, even if they don't have any experience. We are a group of seniors from different ethnicities that mean at the center. Now everywhere it comes to paint, there is quilting classes and knitting classes, sewing classes, and other art and crafts classes. Most people come to these classes to be friends, to have a good laugh, to talk to other families, and to have a good time in every American atmosphere. Thank you.
The next speaker is Sandra Smith, followed by Carmen Mendoza.
Good afternoon. I'm Sandra Smith. I'm piggybacking on what all these people have said about the senior center. I volunteer at the senior center, and I, I can vouch that they are exemplary employees. And typically, you know, my 30 years background in security, I'm like just sitting back and I'm watching. But yesterday, I saw something that was deplorable. I saw a man walked in and told Robbie, you need to back off. First of all, Kathy, who works at the, at the senior center bingo, she was approached and said that Robbie needs to be fired from his volunteer position. How do you fire someone from a volunteer position? So the man walked in and told him he needed to back off, former city official, now retired, and told him, I can hurt you even further. I mean, in my, in my experience, that's beyond bullying. That's a threat. That has red flags. I'm done.
The next speaker is Carmen Mendoza, followed by Rosie Fallato.
Good evening. My name is Carmen Mendoza, and I have been a resident of Brentwood for 60 years. Needless to say, I've watched it grow into a vibrant city. When I retired, I was invited to participate in the Ballet Folklorico by Aurora Sanchez, a professional dancer, at the Brentwood Senior Activities Center. I knew I needed to get my cardio exercise, and what better way than this class? Right after becoming a member, I met Olivia Álvarez, recreation supervisor, someone who motivated us to participate in the community. We look forward to a special. We looked forward to special occasions like the Fourth of July Parade, the Cinco de Mayo Celebration, Day of the Dead and so on. Then the center was alive, then COVID shut us down and sad. Since the center resumed, it feels like the virus never left. We all kept asking for Olivia but kept being stonewalled without giving us a straight answer. I have never met or seen the new Recreation Supervisor. I don't know who she is. It seems to me she lacks that leadership, drive and passion that we were accustomed to with Olivia. We want Olivia and Robbie back. We want and need their senior experience for it to be a successful senior center. Thank you.
The last speaker card I have for the chambers is Rosie Fallato.
Good evening. I'm a volunteer at the senior center and I would just like to reiterate everything that everyone has just said. We all feel the same way. We feel like something is missing now. I've been going there for five years. I volunteer at least three days a week. People come to me and ask me, what happened to this person? How come they're not here anymore? Are they sick? Are they hurt? Are they in trouble? I can't answer. I don't know why they're gone. Because I don't know the answer to that. So I would just like to be able to say something to the people about what's going on and why everyone's so uncomfortable lately. I also would like to know who really is, in the future, going to be in charge of our senior center. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional speaker cards in person. I do have three hands raised in Zoom. I'll call on Ian. Ian, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. Good evening, council. First, I want to say a huge thank you to Brentwood PD for the heightened security at Heritage High School this past week and our football game and homecoming dance. Because of the former teacher who I shall not name. Thank you so much for having that drone flying over our game all night long on Friday night with so many cops everywhere. Plus the cops responding so well to when this former teacher dared to go on Instagram Live and falsely claim that he was at the game sending administration, students, parents and our community into frantic. I would love to continue talking more about our amazing job that the police department is doing at Heritage High School, but I cannot let these heart-wrenching stories from our senior citizens go untouched from me. As you heard from me last meeting, I used to work for the Parks and Rec Department. A bunch of the people who I worked with, low-level part-time managers and coordinators were ready to. But when it comes to upper management, supervisor and above, the city council seriously needs to spend the money in a further agenda item to investigate. It is beyond heart-wrenching that these senior citizens have faced this. If I worked at the senior center myself, I would have made sure I had the utmost training and understanding of the programming to make sure they know that I truly care about them. I wish I worked at the senior center so these seniors would not face what they are facing right now. When I worked in athletics and sports, I cared about every single person who walked through that gate or onto the park. I cared about everyone and I still think of those regulars every single day. Especially this one guy, I forgot his name, I never got it. He always spoke Spanish and I was one of the only employees who spoke Spanish as a cashier. He and I would always just have a little chit chat before he went in. He would always ask me what my next shift is. While working at my other, at my new job today, I could, or been there for a few months, but working at my other place of employment today, I couldn't stop thinking about him. And hearing these senior stories really makes me think even more of him. And I feel so, so horrible for these seniors. I wish that I could, half the time I should go back and stop what the heck happened from happening because some major failure happened. And what really needs to be investigated? Why do we have such turnover of staff? Why did Jalen, Ben, Olivia, June, all of these people, Thomas, all former great staff members leave Brentwood? Why are they working for Stockton, Antioch, Martinez, Modesto, Manteca, name your city? Why? It's just so heartbreaking. I'm getting emotional. So that's gonna be the end of my comment. Thank you. And again, thank you to Brentwood PD for your great work, which Parks and Rec learned from you.
The next speaker is Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Thank you. My comment is very brief. Is what a few speakers ago said is true. That the city actually told her that they would not hold her job because she's on medical leave? Oof, that is against the law. You, the city has to provide a job for her. Companies and cities are not allowed to discriminate for people who are on medical leave. People who give birth are considered on medical leave. And if you give birth, you come back to the company, they have to give you a job. Because you do not get fired for giving birth. You do not get fired for having cancer. I just want to make sure that Damian is listening and taking notes and investigates this because that is one heck of a lawsuit if that speaker chooses to file a complaint against the city. Please make sure you investigate this thoroughly. That is a huge, that is a huge mistake. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cenziana Todor. Cenziana, go ahead.
Good evening. All I have to start with is I can't believe we have three minutes to speak without any reason or any kind of justification, especially when we have seniors in the chambers. They made the effort to be there and our mayor just said, okay, three minutes. Don't care about what you have to say. That's the message I send. Next thing I want to talk about is gaslighting and define it. Gaslighting is one of the many forms of bullying, a form of psychological abuse in which a person or group causes someone to question their own sanity or perception of reality. I want to say this is, this applies to our seniors and their senior club or whatever center is called. So please keep in mind, the buck stops with you as city council, as bosses of a city manager who continuously is gaslighting this whole city. The three, I want to, like, I'm just gonna pause and call it a blip, who actually voted and awarded a raise to our city manager. Your vote shows that you encourage incompetence and low standards. You voted to reward the decline in city services, decline in transparency, diminished focus on residents. Also, you were able to hear a few public comments in support of the city manager and they all came from special interest groups such as local nonprofits, clubs, Chamber of Commerce, real estate, people with vested interests to keep their P on. That's what Tim Ogden is, a P on in its position and facilitates special treatment for these groups. They all said the city manager is a very nice man. And while that is a good character trait, niceness alone does not get things done. Not only you showed you conducted a very superficial evaluation, the three of you. You know who you are, but you didn't directly support a special interest as well. And I hope everyone in this, in the public listening tonight takes a note of that. And I have a few examples, but guess what? Mayor, you cut me short because I had a speech for five minutes that I'm entitled of, based on freedom of speech.
The speaker's timer has expired. Prior to the, prior to the next speaker on Zoom, Mary Kohler wanted to make a clarifying remark.
Thank you for the speaker before Cenziana. But I wanted to make clear, I am not a city employee. I'm not allowed to say who I work for. But my employer is who I was talking about, if I didn't make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Rod. Rod, go ahead.
Thank you, Margaret. Yeah, I didn't intend to make a general comment, public comment tonight, but I'm, I'm just sitting here at home, listening to all of this. And I'm just wanting to let everybody know on the council that what the public is hearing tonight is alarming. It shows a real lack of caring. I mean, I, it's just unbelievable. So I think that the city council really needs to have something to say to these folks. Let them know what's going on with their senior center. I understand there may be some kind of a personnel issue that you feel you can't talk about. But right now, for the city council to sit up there and say nothing to these people, nothing, after the presentation they gave last week and tonight, it's, it's gonna reverberate through this community. People are gonna know about it. It makes the city look really bad and I love Brentwood. And I don't have any idea what the heck is going on here. But I'm gonna find out. People are gonna find out. And it needs to be managed because this, this is just un- unprocessable. It's, it's something that we're gonna have to see something done about. So I would implore you, for the reputation of our city, to get on top of this, get on top of it tonight. Say something practical, caring, loving to these people. Help them understand what is going on to the best of your ability. If you're restricted from saying things, I get it. But you better say something because people are gonna get angry and they're gonna hear about it and something needs to be done. That's, that's all my comment. Thank you.
Mayor? Not to respond to comments, but can you let them know that it's on the agenda? And we're gonna be discussing it because some people might be misunderstanding that.
So before we continue with the public comments, I do want you to know we do have an agenda item regarding the concerns that everyone has brought already. Legally, we cannot have dialogue during public comments because it is not on our legally published agenda. So the reason that we cannot respond to what you're saying at this point in time is because legally we cannot do so. But we will be addressing these concerns that, on the later part of our agenda. We do have an agenda item on this tonight. And you can see the agenda. Do we have printed, we have a printed agendas in the back, against the back wall, also if you'd like. Thank you. Margaret?
I have no additional hands raised in Zoom and no additional speaker cards in person.
Thank you. At this time, then, we will close public comment. Move into informational reports from council members, committees, liaisons and staff. And last time, I think I started, left, Councilmember Mendoza.
Thank you. Since the last time we've met, I attended an Our Neighborhood Voices statewide town hall with approximately two hundred people. That is the initiative that was referred to earlier to take back land and land use and zoning control from the state. Oh, sorry. I didn't do that. I attended the Los Madanos College Teach fundraiser at Trilogy. It was a fantastic event. I attended the Cal Cities Conference, which was a three-day conference. If you're interested in all the sessions, I did post that on my Facebook page and the sessions that I attended. I attended the interagency meeting where we did talk about tobacco use in school. So we are working on that as a city and a police department and fire department and all that. Attended a Cali call with Assemblywoman Pellerin from Santa Cruz County discussing all the housing bills. And that is it for the last couple of weeks.
Thank you. Councilmember Pearson.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. Since our last meeting, I attended and was a speaker at the Alameda County Mayor's Conference and it was held in Emeryville. And I was there to discuss how we had developed the Chicago Fifty Resolution. It was very informative and it was really nice to meet with other city managers, city mayors and council members outside of our county to see what they're doing. So that was great. I went to the school interagency meeting with Councilmember Mendoza and our city manager. And it was very informative and both Councilmember Mendoza and I did do a little bit of a presentation on our efforts from a council level, from a city level on tobacco usage and tobacco prevention. And really had some great dialogue with both the Liberty Union School District and the Brentwood Elementary School District about their efforts at a middle school and high school level. I worked, I've been working with the PAL board to plan the Tamale Festival, which will be held on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM. It will be here at City Hall, so hopefully you all will come to the Tamale Festival. Attended one day of the League of California, the California Cities Conference. And I did attend a session on minorities in leadership, as well as the opening session. So it was amazing. Wish I could attend the other two days, but I had to go be sworn in in SoCal by our Chief Justice of Courts for some other organization. I did meet with two residents about some of their concerns. I watched the Planning Commission meeting of September eighteenth, I believe was the date. And what I'm really happy to announce is that I contacted both the mayor and our city manager and to discuss that we had had five different fifth grade classes coming to our city to really just come and, and go to the library and come play at the park. And I had come up with the idea to see if we can get some city employees, city officials, as well as the police department in the park. I really want to publicly thank our mayor for just being a yes upon a call. The kids thought he was the big cheese, that they, they just loved him. They were, they wanted him, they wanted pictures with him and he was so amazing with the kids. I want to publicly thank our city manager for answering the call as well. He got so many people from the police department out. And our acting chief did an amazing job. There were about eighteen police officers in the park and it was beautiful because they played football with the, the youth. I mean, literally, they, they, they took pictures, they passed out stickers and they just didn't stand in one place. They went to the playground and gave them out and hung with them. I want to thank our library for making sure that every kid in the fifth grade at Brentwood Elementary has a library card, which reading we know is fundamental. And I want to thank Vicky at Sippin Scoop, who made sure that every kid got a scoop of ice cream. And for those kids who have other issues like autism and who have sensory issues, they provided a pastry and replacement. So I'm really grateful. It was a beautiful day in our city that I wish all of our residents could have seen. And that is my, and I stood out there and I was chop suey compared to this guy to the left of me. So that's everything. My report.
Councilmember Orleman.
Thank you. Good evening. I attended the California League of Cities Conference up in Sacramento, the three days. I was able to make it down to Farmer's Market on Saturday morning. SHAP, PAL, the Police Activities League, had a booth up at Shop and Chill, Chill Tea and Coffee on Sunday morning. And I was able to make it up and support the Police Activities League. And I watched the Planning Commission meeting on Zoom.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. And thank you all for coming. You have been heard. I hope some of you are able to stick around and listen to the conversation. But if you can't, if you can't, then you can watch it afterwards on YouTube and you can get a video link from our city clerk. I was part of the Cal Cities Resolutions Committee, so attended a planning session on that prior to this three-day conference. I did attend the three-day League of California Cities Conference. The, I am no longer the president of the Mayor's and Council Members Department statewide. I am now the past president, still one of the officers based on that. Attended a California Alliance of Local Electives meeting, watched the Planning Commission meeting. The Trilogy Teach fundraising events to benefit Los Madanos College students. I did receive several phone calls related to the topic that you're bringing up. And I actually went to the senior center last week and had an impromptu session where I made myself available to anyone who wanted to talk about any of their concerns. I know that people were expecting the five-minute comments last time and, and some were frustrated they didn't get to finish. So I wanted to make myself available for people who wanted to speak longer than that. Passed out my card. Happy to do that again. And that would be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Since the last time we met, I Since the last time we met, I did attend the Students in the Park, and I'll have to say, our teachers in our local schools do such a phenomenal job caring about our kids. It was great to see Councilmember Pearson there. She described herself as chopped liver, she's everything but. She is outstanding representative of our council and our families and our community. It was great to see all the kids. I did make the mistake of mishearing one of the young men who was 10 years old. I thought he told me that he had just read Pride and Prejudice, War and Peace. And I thought, this is a young man after my own heart. I'm an avid reader, and when I was 10, I did read War and Peace. And I thought, well, that's fantastic. You should now read Tale of Two Cities. Evidently, the book that he read was significantly not War and Peace. It was a very small, small book. He looked at me like I'd lost my mind, and he was probably right. But it's fun to interact with these young people. I also attended the League of Cities Conference, had an opportunity to speak to every mayor from Contra Costa County regarding some of the concerns that we're all facing unilaterally. The homeless issue is at one of the top of the list, as well as the growth that we are unified to control locally as much as we possibly can. I also attended the Trans Plan, the East Contra Costa Regional Finance Authority Meeting, the BART and State Route 4 Bypass Authority Meeting as well. And I met with several residents regarding some of the concerns that we've heard here tonight in addition to that, and I have nothing to report further at this time. At this time, we will move into, I'm sorry, does the city staff have anything that they would like to report at this time? We'll move into the consent calendar. I would like to pull item F3. Is there another item that would like to be pulled?
Can I move approval of the consent calendar minus F3?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a first and a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Item F3.
I would like to first, ooh, that's loud, invite up local VFW 10879?
789.
789, I was so close. Commander Bill Weber. He's going to have his next. You can stand right there. We're going to start just by reading this proclamation, so get ready for a lot of whereses. Whereas the Veterans of Foreign Wars, VFW, is an esteemed organization that has tirelessly advocated for the rights, welfare, and well-being of veterans who have bravely served our nation in foreign conflicts. And whereas the VFW has stood as a beacon of camaraderie, support, and advocacy for veterans, providing a platform for them to share their experiences, receive assistance, and engage in meaningful service to their communities. And whereas the VFW has played a crucial role in preserving the memory of fallen heroes, ensuring that their sacrifices are never forgotten, and promoting a sense of national pride and gratitude for those who have defended our freedoms. Whereas Veterans of Foreign Wars Day is an opportunity to honor and express our deep appreciation for the men and women who have worn the uniform of our armed forces, who have faced adversity in foreign lands, and who continue to contribute to the betterment of our society as leaders and volunteers. And whereas the VFW exemplifies the principles of duty, honor, and service, inspiring us all to be better citizens and to uphold the values that make our nation strong. And whereas, on this day, we recognize and salute the veterans of foreign wars, their dedication to our country, and their ongoing commitment to the well-being of their fellow veterans and communities. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Brentwood does hereby recognize September 29, 2023, as Veterans of Foreign War Day, and encourage all residents to honor and support the veterans of foreign war, and join in expressing gratitude for the sacrifices made by our veterans dated this 26th day of September 23, and signed by Mayor Joe Bryant. I'm going to hand the mic to you in just a moment, but I wanted to thank you. I think Commander Weber has been a very good educator for the city council. He's been very present at meetings. He's been involved and engaged in the community. Your VFW hall is a very welcoming place for people to join, whether it's a wedding, a quinceañera, a memorial service, scouts. I know that there's a lot of uses for it. It's a critical part of our community, and your leadership there has made all of us feel welcome there. So I thank you for that. I thank you for your advocacy. I thank you for bringing attention to veteran issues and affairs to us as a council, and congratulations on this proclamation, and I'd like you to say a few words as well.
Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you for the city council. You've always been supportive of veterans, and thank you to the Brentwood community. You have always supported veterans, whether you've been veterans of foreign wars or veterans in our community. If you are a veteran of a foreign war, please stand up if you are able. I want you to look around and give these people a round of applause. This proclamation is for you, and thank you very much. This means a lot.
And now we'll have Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you. To all our veterans that just stood, I want to first and foremost, before I call our next person up, say thank you for your service. So with that being said, if I can have Al Del Grande come up, please. So I personally wanted to recognize you tonight because I was here and was asking for a proclamation for Memorial Day, and you made us do more, and I appreciate you for that. You made us recognize several more people who fought for our country, who died for our country, and the families who lost significant others. So I want to thank you publicly for holding us, and I want this to be a moment to say that when you speak to council, we listen. You came and spoke, and for that, I'd like to go ahead and read this proclamation to you. Whereas the Veterans of Foreign Wars, and an esteemed organization that has tirelessly advocated for the rights, welfare, and well-being of veterans who have bravely served our nation in foreign conflicts. And whereas the VFW has stood as a beacon of camaraderie, support, and advocacy for veterans, providing a platform for them to share their experience, receive assistance, and engage in meaningful service to their communities. And whereas the VFW has played a critical role in preserving the memory of fallen heroes, ensuring that their sacrifices are never forgotten, and promoting a sense of national pride and gratitude for those who have defended our freedoms. Whereas Veterans of Foreign Wars Day is an opportunity to honor and express our deep appreciation for the men and women who have worn the uniform of our armed forces, who have faced adversity in foreign lands, and who continue to contribute to the betterment of our society as leaders and volunteers. And whereas the VFW has exemplified the principles of duty, honor, and service, inspiring us all to be better citizens and to uphold the values that make our nation strong. And whereas, on this day, we recognize and salute the veterans of foreign wars, their dedication to our country, and their ongoing commitment to the well-being of their fellow veterans and communities. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Brentwood does hereby recognize September 29, 2023, as Veterans of Foreign Wars Day, and encourage all residents to honor and support the veterans of foreign war, and to join in expressing gratitude for the sacrifices made by our veterans, dated this 26th day of September, signed by Mayor Joe Bryant. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Please come back and correct our wrongs if you see them. Would you like to say anything?
Thank the city council. The military is very special to our family. We've had a member of our family serving every military conflict since the Civil War. My daughter, who graduated from the Air Force Academy, has spent the last 25 years serving our country. She will be retiring next month as a Full Bird Colonel. Very proud of her. And those are the future veterans that we sometimes take for granted, the people that are out there serving our country right now. So anything you can do to help people who are currently serving as well, not just the veterans, would be deeply appreciated. Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask about the order of agenda tonight? Can we do, if it's okay with the council, can we do Lazy Dog first because I think we have the applicant here, and then move on to the future agenda items that have to do with the senior center?
I'm certainly okay with it if the rest of the council is, yes.
Thank you very much.
Before you do so, if you could take a vote on the consent calendar item that was polled?
Yes, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Consent Calendar Item Number F3.
I second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second on F3, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
It is unanimous? Thank you. At this time, we will move into item G1. This next item is related to a call for review for the Lazy Dog Restaurant, and Miguel Contreras will present. Miguel?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, public. It's Miguel Contreras. I'm here with the Planning Department. I'm here to present the call for review for the Lazy Dog Restaurant, which is application minor subdivision 354-22 and design review application 22-011. Just a quick background on the application. The application was submitted October of last year. August 15 of this year, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider both applications, the minor subdivision and the design review. During the public hearing, the applicant gave a presentation regarding some of their concerns with some of the conditions of approval. The PC discussion, or the Planning Commission's discussion, focused on the rooftop equipment for the design review. There was also some conversation regarding the tower, as well as circulation, ingress and egress. Ultimately, the project was approved 5.0 with an added condition to provide more window details to the elevations of the project. On August 17, Councilmember Mendoza called the project up for council review. And just real quick, I'll go over the project. It would be located at the southeast corner of Sand Creek Road and Highway 4. You can see it highlighted in red. The minor subdivision portion of the project is requesting to split a 5.3 acre parcel into two lots. The northernmost lot, highlighted in green, would be where the Lazy Dog would be situated. It would be approximately 2.78 acres, while the southern lot, highlighted in blue, would be 2.52 acres. The proposed subdivision would be consistent with the general plan and zoning, which is the PD 6, Planning Area 3 zoning district's development standards. Design review in sight. The ingress egress for the project would be off of Sand Creek Road, as I mentioned during the PC hearing. Until the Sand Creek Road extension is complete, the only way to access the project would be eastbound Sand Creek. The project is proposing 171 parking spaces, which is consistent with PD requirements. Part of the project would be a continuation of the public trail, as you could see on the right-hand portion of the map. The public trail would actually be on a portion of the CCWD parcel that is east of the subject site. The proposed building would actually be approximately 9,000 square feet. It includes a 1,500-square-foot patio with a fire pit in it. And there would also be a 764-square-foot waiting area that would be improved with stone benches, and it's called planters, and it would be situated on DG decomposed granite. The site itself, it's meeting all landscaping requirements. It would be 26% landscaped, which is far beyond 16% that's required by our zoning code. The project does propose 65 shade trees, which once more goes beyond what the zoning code requires. All the C3 areas, which are the bio-retention treatment facilities, would be located or situated on the Lazy Dog parcel. None of these would be on the CCWD portion of the development. And the trash enclosure would be meeting all city solid waste requirements. The actual design of the architecture would be Rocky Mountain design. It includes a variety of materials, including wood, rock, steel, and stucco. And this goes for the patio and the main entry tower. Furthermore, on the actual design of the project, the project was routed out to our peer review consultant that looks at this stuff for the city. And there were some staff and peer review concerns regarding the mechanical equipment. If you can see on the elevations, you could see a faint dotted line, and that's to represent the highest extent of the mechanical equipment. As you can see, it goes above the parapet. With that in mind, another concern was the height of the parapet and the height of the tower. To fully cover the rooftop equipment, the parapet would be needed to raise up, and then to keep proportionality between the height of the parapet and the tower. You know, the tower would need to be raised. Lastly, the last concern was the depth of the pilasters, the applicant's proposing 10 and 1/2 inches. The peer review recommended 18 inches at least, and that's to break up a little bit of the monotony of the long wall. Most of these architectural concerns came up during the Planning Commission hearing. You know, the applicant did express concern having to be conditioned to raise the parapet tower. They indicated that it would raise the cost of the building substantially, and the same would go with the depth of the pilasters. Essentially, adding that much depth to the pilasters, it would add to a top-heavy-looking building, where they would have to add more details to offset that funky look, if you will. And ultimately, the Planning Commission did agree with removing the pilasters condition, which they did, and the applicant was approved with the 10 and 1/2-inch pilasters that were proposed. And the Planning Commission did choose to move forward with approving the project with the conditions to raise the... with the conditions to raise the, the parapet wall and the tower. Lastly, the, the project would be consistent or is consistent with the general plan the general plans regional commercial land use designation as long, as well as with the PD6 Planning Area 3 zoning district requirements. The project would also be consistent with the previously adopted MND, which was adopted back in 2017. And this was a city initiated SEQA study and adopted by the city council. Subsequent to the, subsequent to the Planning Commission hearing and subsequent to the call for review by Councilmember Mendoza, the applicant did reach out to the city. And they, they had indicated, you know, they, they were not they, they were having issues or concerns with the conditions of approval that the Planning Commission adopted, which would be a conditions A12 and 13. Specifically, these conditions required the applicant's rooftop material to be behind a parapet. And it requires the parapet wall to be at least six inches above the rooftop material. And it would require that the tower element and accent wall be raised in proportionality with the parapet wall to, you know, maintain that building's proportionality. The applicant proposed condition, a condition, you know, for the, this council's this council's consideration, thank you Alexis, forgot the word in English, the council's consideration. And this, this, this condition would actually replace condition A12 and 13 if, if the council were to adopt it. Also, the applicant did request the removal of condition number 11, which is the added condition that the Planning Commission added to add more details to the, to the windows. Since the applicant believes that the, the condition was left a little too vague. So they're not exactly sure what the Planning Commission wanted. That's also for your consideration. Last, or ultimately, you know, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution approving minor subdivision 354-22, subject to certain conditions. And a resolution approving design review number 22-11, also subject to certain conditions. By approving the, the draft resolution, you would be affirming the Planning Commission's previous approval. That would conclude my presentation and have any questions, I'm open to answer them. And the applicant is also here.
Are there any clarifying questions of staff at this time?
Can we ask questions of the applicant at this time or no?
If you can keep it to staff now, we'll get to the applicant in just a minute when we start the public hearing.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, if there are no further clarifying questions of staff, I will now open the public hearing and call on you, Margaret.
I'll call on the applicant first for 10 minutes and then I'll call on the remaining speakers. If you're in person, file a speaker card with the form provided on the back of the chambers. And if you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand and the applicant can go ahead. And we did receive one comment on this item that was received via email and has been posted to our website.
Mayor, Mayor and council members, I'm Ryan Nicholson with LRG Investors, the applicant and developer for this project. Want to thank you for your time this evening and consideration. I also want to thank staff for working with us throughout this project. I think that I'll just keep my presentation very short and then turn it over to Lazy Dog, whose representative is here to talk in more detail about this new proposed condition and also to show some visual documentation of the screening of the rooftop equipment that they've prepared in terms of a expanded line of sight study that demonstrates that the rooftop equipment will be hidden. And then I think there's also some good language in this proposed condition that provides a safeguard in case anything is discovered to be different in the field when it's being built. So I'll keep it at that. Thanks again for your time and I'll turn it over to Lazy Dog's representative.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. My name is Jared Taylor here on behalf of Lazy Dog Restaurants. Thank you for hearing us here tonight. As you may know, it's, it's been a long path for Lazy Dog Restaurant to come to the city of Brentwood. It's actually a goal we've been working on to bring a Lazy Dog Restaurant to your city for years, starting across the street, moving here now. It's, it's been a, a big path that we're happy to be to this point on with you here tonight. As indicated, we've been working with staff for many months, with the design consultant as well, received multiple comments, incorporated comments, addressed comments. And yeah, what we're really here to talk about tonight is the rooftop equipment and the windows. I'd like to thank you for hearing us here tonight. With regards to the rooftop equipment, we can look at the rendering or, excuse me, not the rendering. We could start with the sightline study, if you like, that we prepared. So th- this is a building that we do build throughout the country. We're opening seven stores a year currently. The rooftop equipment is really brought in board to the building, so it's away from the parapets. And it really comes down to the sightline as you look at the building, the building being very tall. And in the sightline study, you can see from, if we go to the next sheet, I believe it's, I actually can't see it from there and I don't have it printed, but it's from quite a ways away, what the sightline is to where you, you actually can't see the rooftop equipment. It is screened by the parapets. And then in working with City Manager Economic Development, we were asked to come back and we developed this proposed condition of approval with language that does still provide what we understand is the intent of the city code to, to require that rooftop equipment be screened from view and to give the city, the Director of Development opportunity for recourse should there be screened equipment, which we are confident there will not be. A little bit about the windows. You know, in, in the Planning Commission hearing, the windows actually was a surprise to us. That came up after our public comment period was closed. We had no opportunity to speak to that either. And we were just conditioned without knowing it was coming or anything. The, the problem with, with this building and as I understand it, the windows requested, they would be windows which would be showing into the mechanical equipment. This building is, the way it's set up with the very tall parapet, it brings the roof and essentially everything under the roof down. So adding in these additional windows, it, it wouldn't be anything to see in those windows. We just have to do spandrel glass on them and black them out. And that, we feel it, it takes away from the design of the building as well. There's a rendering. Miguel, I, I don't know if you could pull up that we shared as well? I emailed.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The, the rendering, do you have that?
Oh, yeah, of course. One second.
I, I think it's really important to understand, as Miguel indicated in the staff report, the landscape is so important and a part of what this building is as well. We always say with Lazy Dog, the customer experience really starts when you step onto the curb and you're immersed in the landscape surrounding the building. This is a building that's going to really pop architecturally, especially when combined with the landscaping, which we propose really at every location, especially here in Brentwood, which is greatly exceeding the code requirements. I don't know, maybe there's some technical difficulty, Miguel? Okay.
One second.
All good. So, so yeah, that's, that's really it. You know, we're, we're trying to make it happen here tonight. As many of you probably know, making a deal work in this environment is tough. It's been very tough and we've been sticking through it. Since we've been looking at Brentwood, it's, it's literally been years that we've been trying to come here. And we're really hoping that we can make it happen with you here tonight. So I'm happy, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, is there something specific that you would like to point out on the elevations on this?
No, Miguel, in my email earlier today, there was like a rendering, not just the elevations. I don't know if you've got that. Oh, yeah. And, and it was just, what, what it did is the rendering like shows the landscape better. It's like it's, you know, these are 2D. It's just a better 3D image to be able to see the building. I was trying to show that, but that's okay. We can continue.
Okay, Councilmember Mendoza?
Hi, I want to thank you for coming back. I watched that meeting, so having worked for retail, I, I kind of understood your frustration a little bit. When you own a brand, it's your brand, so. But my question is, how do you feel about the new condition about if you can see it? How does?
Yeah, so, so the language, you know, we did a call with staff, went through the language. I have authorization on this language from the C-suite level at Lazy Dog. We're comfortable with it. We understand it has to be integral to the architecture, the colors, the finishes, everything. I mean, I guess what I'm saying and what we're saying is we're that confident you're not going to see it.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions?
Hi, good afternoon. I did have a question about, is there a possibility in addition to this language, adding some language that the parapet and the rooftop equipment will match the colors integrated with the building or the colors of the parapet? So it's more hidden and I'm asking this because I've seen photographs and I don't know if we're able to have it pulled up from one of your restaurants in California. Do we have that, that picture of the, of one of the restaurants? Was it Santa Rosa, San Ramon?
San Mateo.
San Mateo, yeah. Where it matches the color and it's, even though it's seen, it's inconspicuous?
You're absolutely right. So San Mateo was a recent build and on that building, it's, it's essentially like metal lubers that are screening the mechanical equipment there. And, and that was actually by design. And so, you know, coming into this hearing tonight, some of the higher ups, Lazy Dog are like, hey, let's propose this, show them the photos of San Mateo. They think it looks great. I said, no, the city of Brentwood code specifically says that it cannot be a screening material. It has to be integral into the design. That's everything that we've talked about with the city as well. So we understand and I, it's, it's very clear all the way to the top at Lazy Dog that what we did in San Mateo is not going to be accepted here. And, and that was a very different building, I must say as well, than what we're proposing here. It does have a slightly similar tower. It doesn't have the, the metal roof, angled metal roof on that tower. In San Mateo, oh my gosh, that was a postage stamp of a lot we had to deal with. A very different building, many, many, many square footage regulations that changed the building quite a bit there.
I think specifically my question is the screening material, you have it match? If, if it comes back from the Director of Community?
Yeah.
Yeah. That it will match in color?
Yeah, I mean, my read of this is if during construction, sorry, moving on, if anything is visible, the applicant will develop a screening plan to be viewed by the Community Development Director. The screening materials shall match the primary building colors and materials be integrated into the design of the building.
Yeah, so you.
It's already in the language proposed, yeah. I agree.
Okay, all right. And then the other question that I have for you all was on the, from that same photo, I think there was a picture of horizontal lines in the windows. I really don't care about linings in the windows, but I just was wondering, on those and that particular build where the horizontal lines are going on, on the, the windows, was that showing equipment in that same location or, or was it not?
So you're talking about the red molions essentially that separate the windows? And that you're talking about the, the second story of windows essentially, right? Or for lack of a better word. You know what? I don't know offhand. I, I don't believe that there was, I, I don't know on San Mateo. And this is the rendering, thank you Miguel and Alexis, that of what we're proposing here in Brentwood.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you for allowing us the chance to review this with you. My question was also actually around the windows and, and part of it, Councilmember Pearson asked, but since there was some kind of a, a vagueness to what was proposed at the Planning Commission meeting, is there something that you're comfortable with that you think has a little wiggle room to expand the design features of it? I, I didn't, I, I'm, I'm mentioning it too because I didn't see that it was something that was a window that wouldn't be seen. I was more seeing as the windows that are seen at the bottom and I don't know the, the red, what is that called?
Molions, yeah.
Yeah.
The, the metal that separates each piece of glass, yeah. So there's a lot of windows that are proposed on the building now. Everything that's shown in the elevations is a part of the staff report. That's all proposed.
Okay.
That's, that's what we're comfortable with. That's what we hope to have approved.
Okay. And then the other question would be just a, just a kind of a general statement about your, your brand and the way you've moved forward. I know there was some discussion at that point about the economic state of, of where we are these days and how much more materials and constructions cost. And so I, I would just like you to share your thoughts on this brand and its value and, and how you feel about it versus what might have been proposed in the past, what other cities are doing? Just, just a little bit of general information from you on the brand.
Yeah, so that there's absolutely been an evolution of the brand's exterior architecture. We've seen it in the signs. That was a big take back for a lot of cities, like these signs aren't the same as we've seen before. These are different. There's been changes in the trellises around the building. There's been changes in the colors. There's been changes in the design. You know, and every city's, you know, we, we do these hearings all over the country. Every city is different and like, well, 70% brick and then it looks like a castle. We see that a lot on the East Coast, right? And we, we try not to do that. We try to keep to what we feel is that Jackson Hole, Wyoming, architecture and, and delivering that. And you're going to see that, we feel outside of the building, you're still going to see everything inside of the building. The menu's the same, the operation's the same, the service is the same. You can absolutely still bring your dog onto the restaurant patio.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions of the applicant? Thank you. At this time then, I need a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing?
Someone's saying.
If you just want to see if there's anyone else in the public who might have a comment before we do that? That'd be super.
Yes, let's do that. Let's open to public comments. Thank you.
I. If you're in person, please file a speaker card. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks will be limited to three minutes per person. Do I have anybody in the chambers wishing to speak? I'll move to Zoom and I will call on Cenziana Todor. Cenziana, go ahead.
Hello? I hope you can hear me, the video and audio stop at some point? Can anyone confirm you can hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, and I really hope I can give five minutes. Otherwise I'll just file a complaint with the PBC. Always three minutes, okay, good. It, it's a public record. So thank you for the opportunity to speak for three minutes when this whole council voted for five minutes public comment. Thank you for infringing of my, on my freedom of speech. I want to address to Lazy Dog team right now. Thank you for considering of coming back and bringing this project in front of our city. I really apologize for any public official, planning commissioner and everyone at the city we know and you heard, we have very incompetent staff. I really apologize for that. And I, I really appreciate you coming back and I apologize for them trying to manage your brand. It's unconceivable. Somebody telling a private business in United States of America, a free country, best country in the world, that they can, they should do something different than what the Free Enterprise Act allows them to do. So please accept my apologies as a resident, not as a public official, to what this city and their incompetence did to you. And I would really, really encourage you to stay here and build here and have a presence here because our residents really want you to be here and they need you to be here. You probably monitor as an enterprise, the public, the social media and you've seen all the positive comments. You should be able to build here and be here and serve our community. And again, all I want to ask you, Lazy Dog, stay here, be here, be part of our community and we will support you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carolina Vilaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. Good evening, Lazy Dog. I've eaten at your Concord location, which is in a very, shall we say awkward corner. It's difficult to get in and out of, but the food is so good that I don't mind having to try and navigate that parking lot. I would just remind City Council, Amberlane Apartments. that parking lot. I would just remind City Council, Amberlane Apartments, there was no oversight to that build, and you can see drains and you can see chimneys all exposed, and we didn't do anything about that. So I can appreciate the attention to detail for this, but I will also tell you that as a person who worked for Three Fortune 500 Corporations, the brand and appearance of a restaurant is key to the experience of the diners. They are familiar with other buildings, even though there are nuanced changes for design to allow for regional tastes. But I will tell you that the submission from Lazy Dog meets all the design requirements. I don't know why we can't move forward with this. I really need this restaurant to come. I'm tired of going to Concord and Walnut Creek and other places to eat delicious food. We have limited restaurants here. We need variety, and we need this restaurant badly. So please approve this project, in this case, as is, because as is is really, really good. And I'd like to thank Councilmember Mendoza for her efforts in pulling it back. Thank you. Go Lazy Dog. Come to Brentwood, please. Thank you.
I have no additional hands raised in Zoom, but I do have a speaker in the chambers, Denise Duran.
Good evening again. I just want to say, and ditto to what many of the other people have spoken in terms of the excitement that we have here for Lazy Dog, and also I want to say thank you to the chamber, or to the council here in the chamber, who are listening and seeing how we can get to yes. I think it's pretty clear in terms of the questions that are being asked, that that's the, that's the intention, is how do we get to yes? And so I want to say thank you for putting that forward. And I also want to acknowledge the work of Lazy Dog and their, their team for continuing forward as well. And on behalf of the Brentwood Chamber of Commerce, I want to acknowledge and recognize the importance and value that this type of growth can bring to the city, that it helps with jobs, it creates opportunities, it's creating yet another place for people to eat at when they go to our fantastic Soccer Sunset Complex that's coming eventually. So there's lots of opportunity. The consistency is important, and also having to mitigate our policies and development and whatnot. So I just want to acknowledge and recognize everybody stepping in and stepping up so that we can get to yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no additional hands raised in Zoom and no speakers in the chambers.
Thank you. At this time then, we will close public comments, and I do need a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public comments. Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second closing public hearing. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Now moving into council discussion. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah. Yes, I'm, so I pulled it, so I just, yeah, but I just wanted to really quickly say, I, there's things that the Planning Commission did I didn't fully agree with. I, it sounds like you are not okay with the grates on the windows. And is that, can you put the conditions back up and share, like, to the screen? Is that still the case? Like, you just want the windows without the metal things? I think it's condition 11, is it?
Correct.
So you want condition 11, you don't want condition 11, right? Just want to make sure.
So the Planning Commission adopted a condition 11 requiring more detail to the window.
Yeah. I don't think that's necessary for our city. It's like the caller said and how I felt when I watched. It's your brand. Your windows should be the way you want them to look. I don't tell people what their windows should look like. So I'm fine with removing condition 11 if everyone else is. And if you're okay with the new condition, oh, can you put that back up? Sorry. I don't know who's leaving it up because this is what we're voting on, the conditions. If you're okay with that adjusted condition, replacing eight, 12, and 13, I don't know how the rest of the commission feels, I mean, council feels, but I think that would be fine. Yeah, go ahead.
So, so I, I agree. I don't care about how the windows look. That's why I was asking you about them, if you see it or not see it. I think if you're going to eat, I'd rather not have a line looking out the window when I'm seeing people come up obstructing my view. It's no dig at the Planning Commission, but I thought that was too much of a snippity, persnipity detail that was not necessary. So I'm okay with removing condition number 11. And I wanted to personally just thank you all for coming back to the table with language to replace eight, 12, and 13. I thought it was, it's good language. So, you know, and I think the added language about making sure it's consistent in the color matching puts us in a good position that we don't, we won't have some big ugly obstructing, you know, thing put up there. So thank you.
Any further discussion, Vice Mayor?
Can we ask what you wanted to say? Was there something you wanted to make a comment on?
I thought there was a question, and so I just wanted to clarify in response to the question. Yes, our request for the proposal, and I should have stated this earlier, I apologize, is the removal of conditions eight, 11, 12, and 13, and the addition of the condition as shown on the screen. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to say we do, we hold high standards here, I think, in Brentwood. And I think one of the things we have to keep in mind is that we do need to be welcoming to new businesses. We need to work with them in a way that supports our economic, economic development. And I know that you have worked really hard for years on this process. So again, I want to say I appreciate that you're willing to come back and speak with us. There are some parts of this that I think didn't need to go as far as they did. In looking at the comparison of this design with close by buildings and with others, because I've gone to Concord as well and enjoyed it, it is a really attractive building. I think it's, it's going to fit in. The response that we've heard from the public over the past several months, a lot of that social media has been very, very strong in support. So I do support your, your plans the way you've presented them today.
I, I also want to say that I appreciate your willingness to come back. The wording that, that you presented, I think, for me, it certainly quells any of my concerns for the future appearance of it. I have confidence in our staff that if, if this isn't along the lines of what, what the city staff and city council and our residents deem as appropriate, this wording covers it very well. So I really appreciate that. I, I also have been to numerous of your facilities, and I, I have to say that your deviled eggs have magic in them. And, and, and that's just one of the many things. But I also agree that, that you have gone above and beyond to, to, to bring this project to our city, and I appreciate it. So at this time, do we have a motion regarding this item?
I will make the motion. So the first one's for the tentative map. As detailed in the staff report, I move to adopt a resolution affirming the Planning Commission's approval of tentative parcel map 354-22 for Lazy Dog Restaurant, as conditioned by the Planning Commission.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And.
Motion two?
Mayor, if we can make a quick clarification. Alexis, go ahead.
I was hoping we could put the language up for the revised condition.
Okay. And this is for the design review, correct?
Okay. Councilmember Mendoza, as you're considering that second resolution, it looks like there's just a typo on the first page of it. So if you would consider giving staff the ability to correct a typo on the first page, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
So I make a motion to adopt a resolution to approve the design review for 20-011, removing conditions of approval eight, 11, 12, and 13. 22-011, sorry, and adding the condition, if during construction of the building, it is found by Director of Community Development that rooftop equipment is visible from any adjacent development at street level or from any portion of the Sand Creek right of way, the applicant will develop a screening plan to be reviewed and approved by the Director of Community Development. The screening materials shall match the primary building colors and materials, be integrated into the design of the building, and shall not appear to be an added-on element to the satisfaction of the Director of Community's development. Screening shall be installed and inspected for compliance prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy for the building. Typo where?
And if the maker of the motion would consider allowing staff to correct a typo on page one of that same resolution?
Yes, the staff can correct the typo on page one. We removed eight, 11, 12, and 13.
Okay, we have a first. I'll second. And a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Item moves forward. Thank you very much.
Which one? Yes, yeah.
Okay, if you are following our agenda, we are going to, at this time, move into item I two. And this request was a request from Vice Mayor Meyer regarding the senior center programming and operations. And we will go back and do item H two immediately afterward in consideration of those that are here for that item. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I think we're going to do I two, A through C all together, I thought.
Okay.
So it has been recommended that we take I two, A, B, and C, since they are all in consideration of the Parks and Recreation Department and have the broadest conversation instead of having.
They're separate because mine's all park and rec, and this one's only senior, and I don't know if you want to muddy up those waters.
Okay, Damian?
Just one way that could be done is that you have one discussion item for the three items, but each one of the councilmembers making the requests explains their requests, and then take public comment, and the council can discuss each one individually, each one together, just in case there is overlap. It may be a little bit easier to handle it that way rather than coming back and forth after you've decided something on one of them.
Okay, let, let's do it.
And that's up to the council. So what, what would occur is that each council member would make their presentation, because as you recall, in a standard future agenda item, the council member makes their presentation. So each one would make their presentation. You would then take public comment. You would close public comment, and then the council would have their discussion. And then that would allow you can discuss each one individually, each one together, however you want to do it. But in case there is overlap, if one, you decide to do something and the other one is very similar, it might get a little bit tricky to go back to the one you've just decided.
Okay, Vice Mayor, if you will explain your request?
Thank you. We are discussing, just FYI, three different agenda items here that were all, for the most part, in response to hearing from our senior residents. So this is, this is a, it's a reminder that we are here to serve you and that we are hearing you. And so hopefully with our discussions tonight, we will address some of your concerns, but you are absolutely welcome to make additional comments. The item that I proposed was kind of multifaceted, and it was around doing a top to bottom overview of senior center operations. One of the reasons I wanted to do that is because I have a background in this arena, and I wanted to be able to ask the questions that needed to be asked. So talking about, for example, partnerships with nonprofits, MOUs that are new, MOUs that have expired, programs that have been existing now versus programs that were existing a few years ago, what our numbers are looking like as far as participation, what resources are available now that were not available before, or vice versa, what are we losing, activities that we've lost. So I'm looking to try and make sure that we've got accessibility to language and culture, that we have accessibility to all the, the resources that we've had available in the past, that the nonprofits that we've worked with in the past and the programs that they bring with them are still available. I would like to know if volunteer opportunities are still there, if, if any of the standards and requirements and the vetting processes through the city have changed, which would mean, for example, that these programs aren't around because the volunteer processes have changed. I, my concern is, I have spoken to recreation supervisors for other cities, and there has been a trend that I've heard about that has not been expressed here. I want to make sure I'm saying this, that, that senior centers are, they become more about a reservation, more about something that you sign up for, and you only come to the center to attend a class or attend an activity, where senior centers at their core need to be a resource hub. They need to be open to people to come in and drop in and have access to the resources they need. They do, we do need to look at stability and training for our staff members there. We need to make sure that all staff members that come in have the appropriate level of training so that they aren't telling our senior residents, if they have a question, go check the website. We know that's not appropriate. It isn't something that I think is done with ill intent, but I think there needs to be a standard for training for all staff members to make sure that they go through a process where they can, they can really speak to what someone needs to hear when they need help. There needs to be a consistency when it comes to staff, because you're building relationships here. You're, you're talking about seeing someone either day after day, week after week. When you build a relationship with someone that way, there's going to be an easier tendency to ask for help if you need it, to ask to be connected to a resource or a nonprofit. So I think that's really important, too. I'm not, I'm hearing some things about retaliation that I'm not happy about. I did receive, a few people reached out to me about the situation with the volunteer who was told he was not able to come back. Definitely not okay with that. I, I think unless there's a restraining order or a very clear reason about why that person is not allowed in writing that's based on the city policy, I don't think that should happen. I did ask how staff has chosen to work at the center, and I don't, I'm not calling that out by name. I'm saying if we're pulling in someone who happens to be free that day, I'm not okay with it. If we're bringing someone in who has gone through some training and is going to be consistently available as a resource to attendees of the senior center, I am okay with that. I want to make sure the process is good there. Want to make sure that we are being very transparent with any planning that could change the format or change the accessibility in any way, shape, or form of the resources available to our attendees. Let's see. And I think my last one is the status of the previously printed Brentwood Seniors Activity Guide. There was some concern about that not being printed anymore, and I don't know if that's, if that is the case, but we need to look at why if so. And I believe, I'm looking at my list here because it's long. I just wanted to get an idea about the yearly attending numbers since 2019. We know that the pandemic changed some things, but it's our job as a city to make sure that the, the center is welcoming enough, that people want to come back, and they want to be reconnected to each other and to the resources that they've expected from the past. And then I think we need to know what the onsite schedule for the recreation supervisor and other parks and rec leadership is to make sure that, that they are seen as someone that people know, that they're used to, that they can build a relationship with, and again, go to when they need help. And I believe that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Item I two B, Councilmember Mendoza?
So all three of us made agenda items that same night. And if you don't know, you make an agenda item first, and it comes back and you talk about it. So we're talking about it now. And for my. And for mine, it was, I've been getting feedback that people were scared to speak and now I kind of understand why. And that's kind of a big thing for me. So I think we need to understand what is going on and why people are afraid to speak. And again, piggybacking, and there's going to be a lot of piggybacking. Why was someone told today they cannot be a volunteer and was it due to them having made a public comment? I don't understand that at all because that's retaliation and I'm not about that. I want, I want to understand why staff is leaving because I know some are leaving on their own accord, so have been asked to leave. I want to understand what's driving them to leave. I also want to understand staff, I would say, rolling three years, who's been here, why did they leave, what's going on? Because usually if it's a good place to work, people aren't leaving, so I want to understand that. I think we need a full Park and Rec Department review, not just with the senior center. When I said Park and Rec review, there has been feedback that I've gotten about maintenance in our parks. You know, one time there was a park that plants were gone and then we went back and forth and finally I asked for a schematic, like, so that I could see what was there and what wasn't there. So I think we need a full review on what is going on in our Park and Rec Department, not just the senior center. I think we need to talk about the maintenance of our parks. What's going on with the youth commission in Park and Rec? Because they had an event scheduled, then it got canceled, then it never got rescheduled. Like, who is doing that and what kind of involvement did the youth commission have? Because we put them in place to help develop programs for the youth and now are we forgetting about the youth as well? It's just, that was interesting. Again, we need to understand the event schedule. Like, we've asked for an event schedule of what's happening when, there isn't a one-stop-shop for me to get that and to look it up real quick and see what all the facilities are there taken. I'm sure there's somewhere on Outlook or somewhere where we keep that information. So that, you know, just a full review. And I don't think that should be internal. I think that needs to be an external with an independent party that is hired to do a full investigation of why there is so much emotion around this and what's going on. I need people to be honest if we do this. If you feel like you have been targeted as either staff or person who uses a facility, if you feel that you have been discriminated, staff or person that uses the facility, like, you need to be open with us. We can't fix anything if we don't know what's happening. And so, you know, I think that's what we need. I don't know if it's going to happen. When we first got elected, Vice Mayor and I, and then Mr. Joe, Mayor Joe Bryant, we asked, I remember sitting here going over like all of what was going on and all of the demands of the departments, and I asked, like, how many more people do you need? And you came, you guys came back and you said, we need these people. And I was happy to do that, happy to do that. But what's weird to me is that we had a level of service with less employees and now we gave you more employees and the level of service has gone down. So I don't understand how with more headcount, we're doing and offering less. So that is, that is my ask.
Okay, Councilmember Pearson, item I two C.
So I'm going to bounce around a little bit to explain my request. I specifically requested, on September 12th, my verbatim was, "I would like a future agenda item request consistent with Municipal Code Section 2.46.02," which would have, and I was later corrected, to write, "Parks and Recreation Commission hold a public meeting on the senior center of programming and facility uses and that they are asked to conduct an investigation, including surveying staff and members of the public for the purpose of obtaining facts and data concerning direct programs and staffing. Also, if it has not happened this year per the municipal code, I'll request that the clarify letter Parks and Rec Commission be included on the next evaluation of the Parks and Rec Director with this information being reported to the City Council and recommendations about how we can ensure a positive experience for our residents." So while I'm explaining, I'd like to go ahead and read parts of 2.46.02, powers and duty of the Parks and Rec Commission. In there, it specifically says that the Parks and Rec Commission, this is the municipal code. "I" says, "The Parks and Rec Commission shall advise the city manager in recruiting and appointing the director of Parks and Recreation and shall, by making a report to the city manager, be a part of the yearly evaluation of the director." That was one of the things that I looked at and said, okay, well, it's in the power of the Parks and Rec Commission to be able to do that. There were other things in there that the Parks and Rec Commission, letter L, says, "The Parks and Rec Commission shall hold public meetings on recreational program and facility usage and conduct investigations and surveys for purpose of obtaining facts and data concerning recreation programs and to assure the provisions of program does need to meet the needs of interested citizens." That being said, I later learned that item I may not be legal, which means we need to change our municipal code if our Parks and Rec Commission cannot evaluate the Parks and Rec Director. So tonight, I'm just going to speak about the second part that I think is imperative based on what we've heard on the 12th and tonight. I'm specifically asking for an independent investigation. I do not want one that is conducted by the city. I would like for us to use the city funds and staff resources to hire an independent investigator to provide, to conduct a investigation, to include staff in the public, of the effectiveness of our senior center programming, the effectiveness in the facility usage and rental at the senior center, and to look at the effectiveness of the customer service that is rendered to our senior residents. And I would like that data to be given not only to the council, but I would like for the Parks and Rec Commission and the Parks and Rec Director, not any of his staff, but specifically the Parks and Rec Director, to make recommendations on how we can ensure a positive experience for our, for all our residents, but specifically our senior residents who would, who go to the senior center. That was, it's mine.
Okay, at this time, we will open public comments on items I two A, I two B, and I two C. Margaret?
Now's the time to speak on this agenda item. Please file a speaker card if you're in person and if you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and the microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I do have one speaker in person, Danny Dorman. Mr. Dorman?
Hello again. Honestly, I didn't think I'd be up here until the ache in my knee reminded me that I am a senior as well. I'm just not a senior who has gone to this. I've been there once, so I can't say I've never been there. People know how I feel about the city manager. As a matter of fact, again, that's one of the reasons why I didn't come and talk about whatever it is that he's getting, because it's Danny Dorman. He's complaining about this guy again. All right? Who should be held accountable? You know, I, to me, it's always been a very simple calculus. You start at the top and you work your way down. Unfortunately, this person's been rewarded for what he has or hasn't done. During his last review, I came up here and I said, "He will do something that's going to hurt the city." I didn't know what something was. Honestly, I thought it was the kumbaya meeting that you guys were forced to have. But I here tonight? My God. I can't speak for all of them, but I'm old, I'm usually in bed about this time. And so do you take the time to come up and talk about retaliation, to talk about services? And then to wonder, well, who should be held accountable? I know I can't look at them, but I could certainly point. It's an easy calculus. Retaliation. See, this is the one that's kind of sort of interesting because early on, I was, someone came to my attention and said point-blank, "The city manager wants you to stop talking about him." Okay, so, and that was Carolina, for the record, because I don't want anyone to think it was anyone else. It was Carolina. He came to me and said, the city manager came to me and said, "I want you to tell Danny to stop talking about me." So to me, when I heard about retaliation, it's not a stretch to wonder who this former city official was and how and why. Starts at the top. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mary Kohler.
Good evening again. I guess to make it about as simple as I can, listening to everybody speaking and the retaliation that I've heard about and that I'm now experiencing, I think we just need to clean house. I think we need to clean house with the Parks and Recreation. I think we need to clean house if, if who's ever in charge of them is not making sure this stuff isn't happening. Because Ms. Mendoza, people are scared and they're going to keep being scared and they're not going to talk up because there is retaliation. Okay? I forfeited my job because I think it's important enough. I have a husband that can support me. A lot of these people don't. And so there, it's unless you can do it anonymously, these people are going to keep coming. They're going to keep coming after us and the only way it's going to stop is if you clean house from top to bottom. Thank you.
I have no additional speaker cards in person. I will move to Zoom and call on Cinziana Todor. Cinziana, go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak for the whole three minutes again, and I appreciate Mayor's opportunity to infringe on my freedom of speech, even though the ordinance all council members approved was to allow five minutes for public comment. All I want is everyone in the council chambers to file a speaker card right now and ask for a top-down review of the city staff, including the city manager, just so we get to the bottom of this debacle. Our city cannot continue to be in such bad light and have our services the way they are today. Not serving the residents, non-transparent, and also not focused on residents at all. That's all I want for everyone in the city chambers. All it takes is 30 seconds to say, "I want a top-down review of the city staff," starting with the city manager. Why am I asking for this? Is because ours, the buck stops with the leadership and it starts at the top with the city manager. This individual has been rewarded over and over again for incompetence, for ignoring the residents, for not caring about the city and what happens with its residents, and just serving special interests. So you seniors are not a special interest group, but you are very powerful. Remember this, power is in the numbers. You have a saying and you have the power to overturn this bad situation that was created by this individual. Just let that sink in. And this is on top of police services declining, homelessness and its presence increasing, and the police that he manages not doing anything about it. Our parks are in decline as well. I personally open tickets and tickets over and over again. So please...
The speaker's timer has expired. The next speaker is Carolina Villaseca. Carolina, go ahead.
Thank you. So first, I will caution, never piss off seniors because they have nothing but time on their hands and they will become vocal, as you have seen tonight, but they also have time to go places and do things that you may not like. I have seen this firsthand. I have picketed with seniors. It's a glorious experience. Second, I, I would like to also say that it is true, the buck stops with Tim, he's ultimately responsible for this, and Bruce, who's the head of Parks and Rec. They are both responsible for what is going on, not only with the senior center, but also with the other services that aren't exactly up to par in the city of Brentwood. Three people on city council rewarded Tim with a 5% raise. Before you had the evaluation done, which I think is really weird, I'm going to say that again. I never was told what my raise was when I worked for a company until after we had done my performance review. Performance review comes first, raise comes second, and then bonus comes third. And I, I just, I just have to state that this was really strange to me, that today I got to speak on the review, but the bonus was given at the last meeting, which is not bonus, I'm sorry, raise, it's late. Yeah, so we do need a review. Top-down is right, starting with every department and looking at the efficacy, because some departments are doing really well, other departments not so much, and especially a department like Parks and Rec that takes care of our most honored people in Brentwood, which is our seniors, that is shameful. I also want to say that I've gone to Parks and Rec's meetings and I've given public comment and the amount of smirks, eye-rolling, and disdain was unbelievable. You will soon see that there will be a very, very ugly play structure at Veterans Park. It's red, white, and blue. It is the biggest eyesore you have ever seen and they said, "Oh, but it's so cute. It's absolutely patriotic." And then they, then they passed it. But, but you're going to see it and it's for little kids. It's not for kids of junior high age, upper, upper levels, elementary, junior high. So you're going to see a change at Veterans Park for the worse in the very near future. So yes, absolutely, Parks and Rec needs an overhaul. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mike Johnson. Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Mike Johnson with the Kosher Soap Company and we have an initiative to make kosher soaps that we can hand out to the homeless as a way to have them get hygiene products for free of charge. And we use a, a special type of science that we adapted from Germany.
Excuse me, Mr. Johnson, this item is specifically for items one, two, A, B, and C. Are your comments germane to that, those three items?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'm not hearing that from what the speaker's saying. I'm hearing him talking about soap products and I don't believe that is relevant to the Performance of the Park and Rec Department. And so if you feel that the speaker is not germane to this topic, it's up to you on how you'd like to proceed.
Houston911gtvflyers.com, hail Hitler, white power.
He's, he's already turned off.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may clarify, the public does have the right to speak under general public comments and the council does not have as much ability to regulate some of those comments because a public is speaking items not on the agenda. But when it comes to a specific agenda item, they are not allowed, they need to keep the topic to that, keep their comments to that topic and clearly the speaker was not doing that. And if that continues, the mayor has that ability or the council has that ability to ask for it to stop. And a general public comment, it's much more difficult.
Thank you. And in regards to what this person... And in regards to what this person just said, I think his comments speak to exactly what level of individual he is. And I apologize that we had to hear it. And I'm confident that he will get to enjoy the fruits of his, his speaking at some point. I'll just wait for that to happen. I'm sorry, that wasn't very professional, but you guys zero tolerance for racism. Margaret.
The next speaker is Sadie Enward. The next speaker is Rod. Rod, go ahead.
Thank you, Margaret. Yeah. As regards to the last speaker, I agree with the mayor. There's no place for that in civilized society anywhere. And that was just disgusting. But moving on. First of all, I want to commend the, the three council members that brought forward agenda items to, to enable discussing this problem. I greatly look forward to, I, I hope that the motion will be made and passed to do an investigation as requested. And I greatly look forward to seeing the results of that investigation. Again, this is a black eye for our entire city. There's, it's almost unimaginable. I will say I'm joining Danny Dorman. I too am a new senior citizen. I, I thought it was a kind of going to be things like happened to me when I went and got my, my flu shot. They said, oh, you get to have a bigger flu shot now because you're older. So I would like for, for my experience to be that and not have to be worrying about how I'm going to be treated later on when I want to go use a senior sitter. I'm not quite ready to retire yet. But I would like to have that facility available to me and I'd like to see it well-run. And I, I do think that we're seeing some things tonight in public comments that will lend themselves to a later discussion that we're going to have under the ethics. So let's stick a pin in that. But again, I just want to commend the three city council members who are listening to these folks who are trying their best to take care of them and get to the bottom of this. And I salute you and go. Thank you.
Mayor, could I make a request? We have a lot of unfamiliar names lined up to make comments. Can we be very, very careful about cutting someone off immediately? If there's anything suspicious happening?
We will do our best, Vice Mayor Meyer. This is something that is currently going on in many Bay Area cities, especially in this county, where you have speakers that come on and make primarily anti-Semitic remarks. And at the same time, the public does have the right to speak, but it's limited to this agenda. And if they are not talking about this agenda item, then the city clerk will, will cut them off.
Thank you.
The next speaker on Zoom is Jeffrey. Jeffrey, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I think Parks and Recreation is highly important. I think that we should continue to fund and allow for people to have places to spend their time in a positive, clean environment. I would like to see more money given to seniors and their ability to go out and do things. Pickleball seems to be rather cool. I think that spending time outside is far more important than spending the time indoors staring at what the media is putting on. And I think people should be spending a lot more time outdoors, doing positive things, breathing fresh air. I would like to continue to see more funding going to keeping people from being obese. I think being outside, exercising is a good way of keeping our society healthy. We have seen a rather large increase in diabetes and other diseases caused by stagnation and lack of movement. So as a resident and a person who loves outdoor activities, I think it would be wonderful if we could continue to fund outdoor recreation activities. I would like to see all sorts of money going to building tennis courts and baseball fields and soccer fields and places for people to spend their time versus watching the media, which we know is controlled by people who don't want other people being healthy. So I would just like to say as somebody who resides within the state and in this community, that I think it's a rather positive thing that we do. I would like to see as much money as possible going towards outdoor activities. I just think that it would be wonderful if we could continue to divest and give money to our community and keep people as healthy as possible. Staying away from television and staying away from Hollywood, which all have an agenda, which is to keep people lazy and fat and inactive. I would love to see as much money going to Parks and Recreation as I can. We need to get away from supporting the police and all these other globalist elites and fund people who want to go outside and spend their time in nature. End of comment.
The next speaker is Jeffrey. The next speaker is Judy. Judy, go ahead.
My name, if you want to get familiar with it, because I am a citizen and I am allowed to have my public free speech. So I'd like to talk about your Parks and Recreation program. I'm allowed to comment just as much as anyone else, whether or not that chubby boomer woman wants to cut my speech off or not. And First Amendment and the Brown Act allows me to criticize your board. So whether or not you are all boomers or not, doesn't make a difference. You guys think you could take the rights away from other people and you cannot. I believe that it's important that you give people free speech to comment on all issues, including this one. So when it comes to the Parks and Recreation, I should fund this even more so to make sure that the media and the banks that are owned primarily by our 2% population of Jews don't over-influence our youth. Our youth is out.
Mayor, can we stop this?
Mr. Mayor, he's made his point about funding the Parks and Rec Department and he supports that.
The next speaker is Ernie. Ernie, go ahead.
Yep. I'll be short and sweet. Fuck you, Kites and fuck you, Mark's is back.
That's up to the council. If you want to take a break to finish public comments, you certainly can. The, the public will still have the opportunity to speak when, when we come back. It looks like you have three more speakers at this point on Zoom.
At this time, we will take a five-minute recess.
Margaret, turn it to you.
I do have six hands raised in Zoom. I'll call on Ryan. Ryan, go ahead.
Doesn't appear that Ryan is responding. Madam Clerk, I believe you can go to the next speaker.
The next speaker is Hank Ford. Hank, go ahead. It doesn't appear that Hank is responding.
Margaret, could you read only the first name?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll move on to Jim. Jim, go ahead.
Yes, is this public comment?
It is. It is public comment for items I two A, I two B, and I two C.
So this isn't the time to ask why we tolerate Jews sucking baby penis?
The next speaker is Antonio Xavier. Antonio, go ahead.
Staff, council members. We see what you're having to endure right now. Please continue to hold your heads high. This is not Brentwood. This is a coordinated attack. And keep your heads high. We will get through this. I'm a big proponent of free speech, but it might be time to consider vetting how we handle our Zoom meetings. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Hans. Hans, go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hell Hitler, fuck the Jews.
The next speaker is Tom. Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, hello, my name is Tom Gates. And what I was saying earlier is that we need to turn 6 million Jews into...
There are no additional speakers with their hands raised. I do have an additional speaker card for in-person comments. Robbie Myers.
I, uh... I was very hesitant to speak tonight. I spoke last time, and I expressed a lot of my issues and concerns at that time. But over the last several days, it's... I've been labeled as a troublemaker, organizing all these people to come and berate you with their issues and complaints. I just want you to know that that is not true. These people came because they're concerned about the way the senior center and the staff and everything else is being run. And it's not out of Robbie or anybody else motivating these folks. They're here because they love and care about the programs that they have on a daily basis. And they care about those of us that care about them. And this is not about Robbie getting his job back or anybody else. This is about doing what's right for those folks who took it upon themselves. Half of them have a hard time even answering a cellphone, but yet they were wanting to watch on Zoom. I don't know how many people watched tonight, but there was going to be a lot. So I just want to say that I... I worked for the city for almost 10 years in lots of different capacities. And I understand that change comes and change happens. But when you expect people just to bow down and conform without any question, then you're out of line, as far as I'm concerned. And it's nobody's fault out here in this audience about what's going on. It is your fault. It's not the fault of the people out here. There needs to be accountability from top to bottom. And that's what's missing. The accountability for what decisions you do make. And you can't just go hide by taking another job within the organization. You need to stand up. If you want to make a decision, stand up for it and fight for it and prove us that it's the right thing to do. Don't just run away and hide because it's hard. Thank you.
I have no additional speakers.
This time, we will close public comments and move into council discussion regarding these three items.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before the council discussion begins, I'd like to talk just briefly about these items. I've not said anything before because the council members needed to give their remarks, we wanted to hear the public comment. But I do, before you begin your discussion, I do want to discuss with you just some of the limitations that you're going to face tonight with your conversation. And remind you of your roles and responsibilities in this organization. As you all know, the city follows the council manager form of government. And what that means is the council makes the policies and directs the city manager to implement those policies. You're responsible for giving direction on programs and policies. And except for two employees, the city manager and myself, you can't involve yourself in employee issues or provide direction to other employees. Specifically, if your discussion involves evaluating programs and services, that's appropriate. For instance, you'd like to see a senior center that does X, Y, and Z. It's then up to the city manager to implement that direction. But if your discussion involves employees or investigating employees, that's not appropriate, and you're not able to do so. That's not within your scope. In addition, all employees in this organization have privacy rights. And you'd be violating those rights if you discussed directly or indirectly their performance or their status or any specific employees in open session. And so I want to lay that out there. It's going to be frustrating, I know, but there are limits to what you can discuss, given the form of government that we have in Brentwood. And given the council's role and the city manager's role.
Can I ask a question, Damian?
Can we... There are some cities where all of the directors report into the city council. Is that a municipal code we can update, like if we voted on it?
I have not looked at that. That's not on the agenda tonight, but it's certainly something that if the council wants to look at it, they can. But it's not something on the agenda tonight to discuss. I'm...
Okay, so tonight, since you're saying we can't talk to anyone, can then Tim answer all of our questions from his point of view? What he sees happening, what he's seeing with the programming, where he sees the failures, if we can't do anything?
I...
We're not talking about employees, we're talking about the programming.
If it's the programming, yes. If it starts to talk about employees or their performance, no, you can't do that.
Can we talk about who, like, so for example, well, let's, we can have the discussion, yeah.
Vice Mayor?
And this is coming back with a full staff report. Correct? I realize there's three of us that brought this item forward, but there's some things that we're asking for to come back.
Sure, and as I just, but I wanted to clarify, some of the things that are being requested is not within your purview. And so that wouldn't come back. But the areas that are, yes, of course, you know, if they're within your purview, yes, staff would bring that back. As, you know, we should be, tonight, you're really authorizing the spending of time and resources for certain activities. And so depending what that is, yes, those would come back.
Are we able to discuss position responsibilities without naming names?
If you're talking general job prescriptions and things of that sort, yes. But it could become a little bit more challenging as you start to talk, you know, specific positions where there's only one person who could hold that position.
Okay.
Does the senior club have the right to dismiss a volunteer?
I don't know. The senior club is not a part of the city organization. We have an MOU with them. They're, I think they're a 501(c)(3). I don't know what their bylaws say about that. And that's really not in the councils. Because we don't have, it's not a city entity.
Are the volunteers senior club volunteers, or are they city volunteers?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Tim, are the volunteers that work there city volunteers or senior club volunteers?
I believe they're mostly senior club volunteers, but there could be some volunteers that help the city as well. And so it's a mix. But Bruce can maybe clarify whose volunteers are whose?
Yes, I can clarify that. So both the senior club and the city have volunteers. A lot of the volunteers are senior club volunteers that work at the senior center. But there could be city volunteers as well.
Is, do our procedures require there to be, I'm sure there's probably like background checks and kind of like some kind of volunteer employment agreement? Does that exist in our program?
We do have background checks for our volunteer processes. But what I will say is this is a future agenda item, so we might not be prepared to get into the details of answering all your questions tonight. At some point, I would hope that the mayor will allow me to just address the council with a lot of these items before you make your motion to move this forward.
Can I ask a clarifying question in response to Councilmember Mendoza? Because one of my, one of my items I brought forward was about the volunteer process. Because I understood from a nonprofit that they no longer offer one of their programs at the senior center based on the volunteer vetting process becoming more complicated than they were willing to take part in, given that they have their own, and it used to be sufficient.
That is something that we'd have to look into, but we can do that.
And I just want to make a quick statement. It's, Robbie mentioned something that kind of reminded me. Someone came up to me and said that I had organized and written a script that was being talked about in City Hall for people to come and complain about the senior center. I just want to make it very clear that I don't know the people at the senior center. I know Sylvia, but I mean not from the senior center, from Trilogy. So any, I think... This is about the seniors and for people to twist it and make it about somebody else is, to me, horrific because it's finding a scapegoat for their concerns. I don't know how to move forward since we can't talk about a lot, but I do want there to be an investigation. So other cities will have the district attorney's office do internal investigations when they think something is amiss. Does, and can we in our future agenda item, so I know, you know, Councilwoman Pearson had talked about investigation, I've talked about investigation. I think we do need an investigation inside. I don't know if it's a private investigation company or we reach out to the district attorney's office that also carries out investigations when cities are having issues. But there's something really amiss. And I know you're going to explain it, but this has been going on for over two years. And no one can explain it. We, you know, we've been getting the runaround for two years on what's going on. We've been told it's being taken care of. It's obviously gotten worse. And, um... And, you know, I know you sent us the programming today, that was fine, but what I want to know is, over time, what is the programming looking like? Are we diminishing what we offered and offering of lower service? So a snapshot in time doesn't give me that. It's just a quick snapshot and it doesn't do it. We need over time analysis to figure out exactly what's going on. We need the seniors all interviewed to see what's going on. And they need to feel like it's in a safe place. That's why it can't be anyone that is city-related. It can't, you know, no one on staff. I don't, I don't know. I'll let you...
Councilman Ordinance?
Yes. Because this is time for us to ask a couple of questions. Councilmember Pearson, you talked about effectiveness of rental, effectiveness of the three items. Can you just give me the last part of each one of those one more time? Sorry. And while we're on the subject, or while I have the mic on, I hear what you're saying about not being able to discuss employee relate, or how we deal with the employees and employee disciplinary process or termination process. When I first got on council, Councilmember Mendoza brought up a future agenda item, I believe, that talked about employees being free to speak from that microphone. I thought it was ridiculous, being a former employee of the city of Brentwood, that we would have to give people that live in Brentwood permission to speak freely from a microphone where they're supposed to be allowed to speak freely. I thought that was so far-fetched that she didn't understand how the city of Brentwood worked. After listening to tonight, I'm disgusted with the fact that people are telling us there's been retaliation for comments they've made from our mic, from their public comments. I understand we can't do an investigation, but if we've given everybody that right to speak from that microphone freely as a resident, then how are we later going to discipline them for what they said or what they believe? We just had to sit through some really ignorant comments on Zoom because it's the law, but I can't hear from my employees, or I'm sorry, from the employees of the city of Brentwood? That's disgusting to me. That's appalling. They need to be able to walk in this room if they are a resident and tell us what they think. I don't know if it's happened, but if it has, we need to figure out a way to make it stop. I'm sorry, I cut you off. Councilmember Pearson.
If I can just clarify, I'm starting to go into some of the policy discussion. Not on, not on the agenda, the policy that you're referring to, but, you know, please note that there are instances where, and this, I believe, came up in one of the future gen items, where there is a, an instance where staff is told you are not allowed to talk about something. And that's generally what involves an investigation. And that is standard practice in organizations that when there's a personal investigation, the person making the allegations are not supposed to talk to anybody, the person who is subject to the investigation is not supposed to talk to anyone, and the witnesses are not supposed to talk to anyone. And we have a discrimination harassment policy that says if you do that, you are subject to discipline, including termination. So there are reasons why employees might not be able to, despite this policy, to be able to talk about something.
Okay, I understand during the investigation, having been part of those investigations and having been given those orders, you're not allowed to discuss this with anyone. I've been there. I've been on the receiving end of those comments. I didn't realize the people that were talking on the mic were also given those instructions if they were. So we're talking apples and oranges.
And I don't believe all of the speakers were city employees that were speaking. And I thought that was clarified, that at least the one, the, the, the woman who alleged, who had originally mentioned retaliation, she did clarify that she was not a city employee.
Okay. What I said, it was an independent investigation that's not done by anybody who works for the city, conducted on the effectiveness of the senior center programming, facility usage, and customer service was the third one. I modified my request because I later learned more about municipal call section. It, um... It does feel a little bit like, like, you know, hand tying, because municipal call says what it says, but I understand the legal, as an attorney, I understand why we can't, due to the private nature of employment. But, but it's not falling on deaf ears. And even though we can't do certain things up here, there are things we can do. And I'll just leave it at that. So that being said, that was my request. However, I do want to add, I'm like all over the place with the comments earlier, and it's just hard to come back to this one. But I also want to, want to state that I think that this investigation will be good because I'm going to add to my list that we need to investigate our independent third-party vendors who are coming to our senior center to see their effectiveness, because I don't like the idea that if someone was threatened, I would think that that's not okay. So I think when we do an investigation, I think we also need to investigate who we're partnering with and see if training needs to be necessary, that they don't speak on behalf of the city and they can't threaten people who are volunteering or who are, who are coming to the center as well. And Brentwood, we take, we value our seniors. We did it tonight with our veterans. And I think that it's just sad that they had to come here and spend time tonight to come talk about it. And even if one or two of them come, that's enough of me. So I know I'm, it's more beyond discussion, but I just, I take this very, very seriously.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Your comments absolutely are sitting well with me. I think our agenda items are similar. Yours is more labeling it an investigation where I had called it a top-to-bottom review. Mine, I tried to establish every single layer of operations and programming at the senior center that I could think of at the time, which does include MOUs with partners as part of my original request. And I think, I still think there's got to be something we can do with the Parks and Rec. There needs to be something there. But I would say that specifically to the senior center, the investigation, I would still like to stand with the list of items I'd like to be part of that investigation. And therefore, I think sort of does combine... Yeah. I think that's a fair thing to do. I don't, do you need to see what my list was?
I would say I heard everything, the parts on employment, I think we just absolutely legally can't do if there was some, but I didn't hear that many at all, if any. And I would like to add, that's why I wanted us all to go together, because when I saw yours, I thought, ooh, they kind of meet. But I'd like to also just have a discussion on how much money, because in the recommendation, there was like $5,000 with Councilmember Mendoza's and $15,000 with mine. And so I'd like to make a recommendation to approve, because this is an independent investigation. I mean, if top-down, whatever one will get us the most amount of information, I'd like to make a recommendation that we approve $100,000
for the independent investigation. About the investigation? I don't think Tim should run the investigation.
Yeah, I don't either.
I think that we need to figure out how to do it as a council perspective, because it needs to be top-down. So how do we do that legally?
So my request is that we hire, and I'm not saying I don't think Tim should do it because I think Tim is complicit in anything. I'm saying I don't think Tim should do it because we've had complaints that Tim is supervisor to the director of Parks and Rec. I'm saying that for transparency purposes, I think we have an independent investigator, an outside party, third party that council approves.
So do we do it kind of like we did the, um, which I'm sad about, but is it a process that we would do kind of like what we did with the attorney, like recruiting company where they interview each of us? And they then form what they think we want and then they come back to us? Or how would that work?
I think that might be going a little bit ahead of the process, because first you need to select somebody. And that would be the first step. And I think there are companies out there that do reviews of city organizations. They, that's one of their, their areas of expertise. And, you know, an RFP can be put out. Because I don't think you'd want to just pick the first one. You'd want to, you know, see who's the best one to do something like that, if that's the direction the council goes. And one way of doing it might be, if you don't, if you want to move this forward a little bit quicker, is, and I don't think you can do this tonight, but have staff come back and you can form perhaps a subcommittee to do the interviews and then have them select a company. But that will be working, you'll need to work with staff on some of this because someone needs to put the RFP or RFQ together. And I'm moving away from the legal side of things. I don't want to go too far at this point. I want to look over the city manager because I'm starting to talk, I'm giving, I'm talking operations. It's not legal advice I'm giving, so take it for what it's worth. So I'm going to turn to the city manager of what I'm saying. Jives?
Did pretty well, though. Yeah, if you're looking for an operational assessment, top to bottom, it looks at everything involved in the programming and MOUs and facilities, et cetera. That's, there are consultants who do that kind of work. I've hired them before in other cities. And that's probably in the range of $50,000 to $75,000. So your $100,000 budget would be, should be sufficient. They would interview all the staff, all the stakeholders. And I heard seniors multiple times. I didn't hear, are we still talking parks?
Well, I wanted...
Division as well?
My item was all park and rec, because I do see that there's been issues over the last two years in other departments of park and rec. So if we could do all the park and rec, if you guys are okay with that?
I'm okay with it as long as we, we dig in really deep on the senior center based on the items that we've listed. What we haven't mentioned yet is what the biggest difference between our two items is that you requested a survey. And I think that does need to be included in it. But I also, in my list, and I can't recall if I added this, was the seniors activity guide.
We can probably just give you a quick answer to that one, actually, why that's not being published currently. It's probably a staff shortage. But Bruce, can you answer why that's not being printed currently, if it's not?
So the activity guides that we have for recreation, we have online now. We also have a senior club newsletter that has been printed in the past. Since COVID, that is now also online. However, we do have printed copies of that information at the senior center. But that's something that through this process, we could easily change if the council directed us to, you know, make that available in print once again.
One of the things we've heard over and over again is that our senior members do not want to have to go online to get their information or resources. So I think we should probably check in with the members to find out what they're looking for in the guide and the newsletter, to see if they should be combined or not, and if, and how they would like to see that work. I think that should be part of the assessment.
Yes, absolutely. We can look into that. The newsletter is actually the senior club newsletter. We do coordinate with them. There's information with our city staff and information there for the city as well. It is a senior newsletter. And then the activity guide is the recreation activity guide. So, but absolutely, we can take a look at that.
Yeah, it sounded like there was an attempt to combine them, so that's why I'm questioning, like, if they're not, if they're, they're each printed separately and left at the senior center at this point?
They are two separate documents, but we can, we can look into that. I...
I just want to make sure everybody's got the access to the information they need.
There's information in both that is redundant. And we have printed information at the senior center that is always available as well. But we can, you know, that's something we can look at.
All right, thank you.
I think I'd like something like that to be in the survey of what our seniors would actually want. And the reason why is I think a lot of the seniors who came tonight and other comments said that it's hard to get on accessibility online. So I'd like to be mindful of what they need versus what we think they may need or what's more reasonable for us as a city. I think if we need to print the guides and if it be certain more utility for them, we need to print them. So.
Just one last thing. I still feel very uncomfortable that someone berated someone at the senior center. What can we do about that? Like, what can, what can Park and Rec do so that person isn't there anymore to harass anybody? Tim or Bruce? Because at the end of the day, it does come back to us. Whether it's, we're not doing it, I'm just asking you what y'all are going to do about it.
You've heard an allegation, but it hasn't been founded. So there's that, right? We haven't done a due process on what actually happened. And that's between two non-city employees. So that's a whole different issue. But if we see harassment of any visitors to any of our facilities, then city staff step in and take care of it.
Okay, so are you going to start that investigation? And will we see the results of it?
I just became aware of it tonight. We'll look into it.
Thank you.
Keep in mind, we did have a few witnesses that...
Yeah, there was quite a few.
Before I call for a motion on this item, Bruce, if you'd like to?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Obviously, there's a lot to unpack tonight. And I have been listening. I've been taking notes. First of all, I want to address the senior center and the seniors that came this evening and seniors that were listening and seniors that may not be here that have concerns. So I want to thank them for coming. I want to thank them for expressing their concerns. And I also want to thank the council for looking into these items. It is absolutely Parks and Recreation and my perspective to make sure that we are providing the best services that we can. The one thing that I really want to emphasize is I'm the director of the department. I've been listening, but the buck stops with me when it comes to Parks and Recreation Services. So I have staff here tonight that have been listening. My staff and the Parks and Recreation Department does not deserve this level of scrutiny. And there's been certain staff that have been called out in the meeting tonight. And I just want to let you know that the Parks and Recreation staff work extremely hard. They're all extremely dedicated. And I welcome an independent investigation. We are an open book. I think that from my point of view, the more scrutiny you have of our Parks and Recreation Department, the more you're absolutely going to see that we have best practices and we are a, one of the best departments in the state of California. And I back, I absolutely 100% stand by our Parks and Recreation Services. Now, it doesn't, you know, through a process like this, there's always room for continuous improvement. We are here to serve the residents and we want to do that to the best of our abilities. But I would just add that you lean in with grace, you lean in with compassion, both for our residents, our seniors, but also our staff, because they are working extremely hard. And, you know, this is difficult for us to hear. But I think in investigation, some kind of review, to see the hard work that is done and to help to show credibility to what we're doing will be very helpful. So with that, I welcome any kind of information that you bring tonight. And I will work hard with our staff and with our city manager to bring the information back so that we can make improvements where needed. So, thank you.
Yeah, I was, when I was talking earlier on discussion, I kind of got lost because I'm having a hard time with everything tonight. But I do want to say that I do see some amazing Parks and Rec staff right here in the audience, and I'm appreciative of what they've done. I want to add, though, that I did take a trip to the Parks and Rec, not to Parks and Rec. I've had a great experience at Community Center. Amazing staff, treated me as a resident, amazing. With event planning, with an event I threw recently that had over 100 people there, I encountered some of the most amazing people. When I went to the senior center before everyone came here, it just so happened I was going to rent the senior center for a different event. I had the most horrible experience ever. I had someone tell me that they didn't know any information and I had to wait until the gentleman who at the time was managing had, when he came back, he never returned any of my phone calls. For over a month and a half, I didn't get any return phone calls about renting. a month and a half, I didn't get any return phone calls about renting. So my time and opportunity had passed for me. When I went back again, I was told that I couldn't go look inside. And actually, they didn't even know I was a city council member. They had no idea, which I think, I'm not asking for any preferential treatment, but I would expect that they would know who's on their council. They had no idea and they told me that I was disallowed from going into the hall to look at the facility. When I just wanted to go in, it was open and just go see if it would accommodate my family for a family event and function. They didn't even know the rental process at the senior center. And I was told that I had to call back. And when I called over to the center here, they told me I had to deal at the senior center. And this was my personal experience before these people showed up. So there's a lot of validity to the things that are being said and it's not a jab at the people I see here in the audience. They've done a phenomenal job. I've seen them on the Fourth of July. I've seen them at so many events. I've seen them sweating their butts off, trying to move things around, doing things outside of their, even I think their job description, making sure that we all were happy. And I've seen people work that bust their butt over there. But I've also had a horrible experience at that senior center and that can't happen. It can't happen for hours in my capacity as a resident, not as a council member, as a resident. And it was horrible. So that's, and I'm thanking you for saying you welcome my investigation. And I'm hoping that you see that there is something there. This is not make believe. People have come, for what? Why would they spend their night here? So I'm asking the council, I'm hoping unanimously we vote for an investigation because I personally had a horrific experience. It didn't feel good. And I'm not a senior. One day I will be. And I can only imagine how hard it would be to, I know, hopefully God willing, I make it there, how hard it would be for me to rent it if I was a senior or to do activities if I were a senior. So.
Vice Mayor?
I was just going to make a motion, if that's appropriate.
Yes, do we have a motion on this item?
I would like to make a motion that staff spend time and resources on item I-2A and I-2B and I-2C. And I guess, I think all of our agenda items that were submitted as part of this agenda packet, for the most part, are sufficient. I think they've covered the bases. Was there anything anybody's missing? In addition to the notes, I'm sure that have been frantically taken all night on this.
When it comes to this, do we need to do another agenda item for a subcommittee?
Yes, so that'd be a separate item. And I also, just to clarify, some of the items that are on those three agenda items, you're not going to be able to do because they involve specific personnel matters.
So then I would recommend that we remove those items that are directly related to any staff identifying information and any personnel information. Is that an appropriate way to word that?
It is. I think it's, the devil's going to be the details and it'll probably need to come back to you to make sure that staff has properly captured what you were looking at. And if there needs to be explanations on why certain things were left out, we can do that. I would probably end up having some of this reviewed by outside council, just who is experienced, who does personnel work on a day-to-day basis just so we don't miss anything or we don't overstep bounds. Or there could be areas that I'm thinking shouldn't be in there, but they'll say, oh, no, no, that's okay. And so we want to do both sides there. So if, you know, again, it depends on how the council wants to handle it. If you want to have a subcommittee assist in this process, certainly you can do that. That would come back at the next meeting.
So that's a different motion, but I do think, yeah.
That would, that would be a future, staff's been told this, it would be, I don't think there's any difficulty in putting that on the agenda to form a subcommittee.
Do we follow the policy or not? But if that's what the council would like to do, we can certainly try to get that back expedited.
And the city manager is able to put it on the agenda.
Correct.
If it's, yes, we'd be following the policy. So you'd add it as a future agenda item at the end of the meeting, but it would go, it wouldn't do the staff time and resources step. It would come back to you presumably with, here's the subcommittee report, but.
Well, the staff reports for the October 10th meeting were already due last Monday. I mean, so there's a, there's a process and a timing issue with all the reviews that it goes through. So we'll expedite that as quickly as possible. But what I think would be helpful, because we do have some overlap between the three requests, is to get some very precise parameters. So I'm hearing the entire department, hearing interview all the staff and all the stakeholders that participate in the programming of all of those facilities and programs. Is that correct so far?
I'd also like to talk about if recently departed employees want to be part of the survey and the interview process, I wouldn't mind that either. Like any, just feedback that they would have. Oh, it's employment.
And I think that becomes more difficult.
Well, they don't work for us anymore. So if they want to provide information, then. I mean, if they're residents, they should be able to speak up.
If they're residents as part of a survey, that's, I don't think you can stop that as part of the survey, but you wouldn't be calling out specific former or current employees necessarily.
Okay.
I would have to say to Tim, your question, that's correct. I also would say to include, I think, seniors and any participants in programming with the Parks and Rec. But I want to specify that the investigation should be one independent, that we do, I do like the idea of a RFP being so staff time and attention to create a request for proposal that's going to be reviewed by council to determine. I'd also like that the budget amount for the investigation that encompasses everything that was added in on all three be $100,000.
And I want to make it clear that I am asking for that full list of items for investigation specific to the senior center. Is that an effective motion? Is there anything missing?
So when we're talking about, when you're talking about programming, are we reviewing all, because I also have concerns like, if this is happening at the senior center, is this happening with regular Park and Rec for kids? Like, and usually you don't know until it blows up, right? Like, so is it all programming that you guys want to look at or just senior center program?
That's the hard thing because I listed the senior center programming that I am aware of and feel comfortable asking questions about, the MOUs, you know, what programs were, and this is over, again, I asked for back to tune 2019 in my request. So I'm also looking at some history here. This is the only hitch with combining all the items because the investigation of other programming isn't unjustified, but I don't want to give up the long list of senior center specific items based on what we've heard and based on what I understand of senior centers.
And I know that we're coming back, is it October 10th, to talk about the adaptive recreation and some other items soon. So I would prefer to just, I know, we need to look at Parks and Rec as a whole. I prefer to leave it with senior center just because I don't want to water down.
Yeah, can we add just questions to the survey about like if you've used the youth, like, like just questions around, not actually investigating and like analyzing it, but maybe just questions about how they're feeling about the customer service and the offerings?
So it would go to?
It sounds like the survey can go out to the entire city.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
So we would want to include in the RFP a requirement of the consultant to put together a survey to encompass all of the various requests that you've mentioned tonight. So that's a comprehensive survey, independently created, independently evaluated, and then presented to the city council. So that would be something we just want to come back to with those parameters to make sure that RFP is precisely as you'd like to see it. So we get the right consultant with the right scope of work and the right budget for you.
In that case, I'm still good with that motion.
But is the motion just for recreation? Or is it just for senior center or is it for the entire department? So just-
No, there's, the senior center was broken down to the parameters that I listed.
Correct.
The additional programming would be based on like the survey. The survey would cover, everything would be citywide so that all the different programming involved with Parks and Rec would be covered.
Including to yours, including looking at senior center programming, I think. Did you also add facility usage?
I, that was the one thing I had to add.
Okay, I would like to add that and then customer service, if that's not in your-
I almost think this is why we need a subcommittee. So like two of us, you know, I'm not pointing at you, but could sit down and go like, okay, what do you want to see out of a survey? Like, what do you want to see? What's important? I almost think before it goes out for RFP, you probably need to sit down and hone in on exactly what it is. So we're not sending it out and like, oh, that's not what we wanted. We wanted more or we wanted less.
So I think we're got chicken, egg, chicken before the egg. So let's make this motion to get it in and then future agenda item request.
So knowing that you're not going to send to RFP until we do future agenda item.
The council authorize that, authorize that RFP unless you delegate that authority to the subcommittee to authorize that.
Okay. I believe, are we?
I had to tell you, I don't know what your motion is anymore. I've had, I've had three of you contribute to this. And I want to make sure, and it's mostly because when this comes back, we want to make sure we capture it correctly and we don't miss anything.
Yeah.
I do have my list, but it's not in the same format as it was in the actual agenda.
So can I, can I start it and then have you write, read it out?
Okay.
Okay. So here's the motion. I'd like to, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to count, to Vice Mayor Meyer's motion. The motion is that we have a top-down investigation, independent investigation of, hit it.
Current nonprofit and CBO partnerships and those terminated since 2019, including reasons for termination. Current MOUs, those that expired since 2019 and those about to expire. Current programs, special projects, events and activities and those terminated since 2019, including reasons for termination. How staff is chosen to work at the center and how training is managed for that staff, whether temporary or long-term. Senior-related experience qualifications of leadership positions of regular center staff, everything considered when placing staff there. Any future plans being explored that potentially change the format, infrastructure or offerings of the senior center. Yearly attending numbers since 2019. Confirmation of language and cultural access efforts. The on-site schedule for the recreation supervisor or other leadership, Parks and Rec leadership. And I'm saying in more general, I want to make sure that we have leadership presence there.
Understood, but as it starts to go to the specific employees, it becomes-
Well, that's why I said onsite schedule for recreation supervisor and other Parks and Rec leadership.
Right.
I think-
So can I, do I remove recreation supervisor and just say Parks and Rec leadership?
I think Parks and Rec staff might even be broader.
Well, I mean, I want, I want it to be Parks and Rec staff that has some leadership.
Okay.
Okay. And the status of the previously printed Brentwood seniors activities guide, which, we have some answers there, but I think it is something that needs to be addressed. And I think I-
And to include facility usage, effectiveness of the programming, customer service with recommendations from the Parks and Rec Commission on how we can ensure a positive experience for our residents. Also, we separately are seeking out a review headcount over the last three years of all the staff through the Parks and Rec with organizational charts and position and attrition over the three years and reason for leaving. I think those are all things that can happen.
I think the, some of that can happen with regard to the attrition, the reasons for leaving that starts to get employee-specific. And I don't think, I don't think that would be appropriate to start having, you know, this person left because of this reason versus these are the numbers of the people that left, here are reasons why people left. What I'm hoping the council will-
I didn't ask for employee-specific, no names.
As it was written, it could be interpreted that way. And I just, I just want to make sure it's clarified.
Yeah, I want specifically just categories.
But, but if it's positions and there's only one or two people who have left that position, it's pretty easy to figure out who that person is.
Yeah.
What, this will be coming back to you. Actually, before I make sure you're done with your motion before I say what I was going to say.
I think I am and I want to specify that we're not specifically, this, as I'm reading it, yes, I can see how it is. And because of the comments, and this is going to Council Member Mendoza, so I'm trying to make sure it works without being violative, is headcount I know we can get. Organizational chart with positions I know we can get. When you say attrition over the three years, just generally for Parks and Rec without specific titles or positions and reasons for leaving. In Parks and Rec without specific departments, names or job titles.
Can I have a follow-up? You said facility usage. Are you specifically tied with the senior center?
Senior center only.
So not the aquatic center, not community center? Okay.
Senior center.
Question on this, and this is a legal question. For the attrition part of it, if we're not, if we're not using name or reason, can we use title for who has left? Because it would, it would speak to whose leadership and where, were they senior center, were they, you know, some of their operations?
Let me just say, we'll provide as much information as legal counsel will allow us to do that. And so we'll try to get you as much information as we can. Because I understand that'll help put some puzzle pieces together and help you understand what happened or didn't happen.
And what I was going to suggest is, if you're done with the motion, what I was going to suggest is that I would like to run some of these areas by Personnel Council just to make sure we're not overstepping any boundaries. I don't think we are. I don't think the motion does that, but there could be some areas that do. And so when it comes back, that would be clarified. So we wouldn't move forward on anything. We would let you know this, this one is going to have to be, have to be amended a little bit for these reasons. So I'd like to at least reserve that just to let the council, I will still run this by outside council just to make sure we're not, we're not overstepping something. And I don't think we are.
Do I need to add that to my motion that the city attorney has the authority to run this by outside?
I'm just letting you know I was going to do that. If you'd, if you'd like to put in the motion, that's fine, but I don't know if it's necessary. Actually, let me rephrase that. I'm going to be spending time and resources on that. So.
So I'd like to add to my motion that the city attorney has the authority to use staff time and resources to run our motion past outside council to make sure that, and to clarify what we can and cannot do.
Before I call for the vote, does it make sense to allow us at some point to have a conversation on what priorities? We are okay moving to the back of the line in order for staff to accomplish this?
If outside council is doing it, how much does it take of staff time, right? Because we don't want them involved at all.
Well, but outside council just reviewing, just to confirm that, that what the council would like to see in this survey or in this comprehensive review is not impinging on anyone's privacy rights or any employee rights, so that you're not exceeding your authority as the council. That's what the outside review would be. But there would be a consultant coming in to help draft all this.
We were trying to save you time and money by having staff prepare the RFP that we bring to you for your concurrence and we've captured everything accurately. If you want a consultant to prepare the RFP, we have to prepare an RFP to get a consultant to prepare the RFP. So it gets really crazy at that point. It takes a lot longer, costs more money. So whatever, your pleasure.
I'm actually okay with staff preparing the RFP because we're going to review it before it goes out anyway.
Okay, then that answers my question.
Is this a, or can it be a joint motion or is it, there's?
I think you made the motion, she amended your motion. So second, she added stuff to your motion, right?
So we have a-
If we can just make sure that the first and second both concur with the original motion as amended by Council Member Pearson.
Yes.
And you concur?
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so we have a first and a second, all in favor, I?
I.
I.
Opposed? It is unanimous. We will be moving on to item, moving back to item H2.
Yeah, sorry, I was just going to say what you're going to say, I'm sure.
Before we move forward, in light of the events that have happened tonight, as far as the online version, and since the ordinance reads-
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, maybe I'll start this. We're discussing, this is a procedural issue with regard to the rest of your meeting. And that is whether or not the council wishes to consider or continue Zoom commentary tonight. The, your agenda, the cover sheet that discusses how this process works describes the Zoom public comment as a courtesy. It's not a requirement. It's a courtesy the council is offering to the community. And as a courtesy, there's no requirement that you necessarily need to continue that this evening. What, we needed to do it through this last item because you'd started with Zoom. But at this point, that item is closed, that item ended. For the rest of the agenda, the council could, if they wished, not have Zoom commentary. But that would, that would be up to the council to decide how they want to proceed for the rest of this meeting.
So I, well, as, as everyone knows, I am a staunch believer in the First Amendment rights. And I will stop there.
Too much, we can't go too much discussion. It's just a yes or no procedurally.
Do you need a motion? Is there a motion? Do we have to make a motion?
For something of this sort, I think it's just council concurrence. Is it?
So do we have council concurrence to not open public comment from Zoom, not Zoom?
No, Zoom.
For the rest of this meeting? And we, we will. And we, we will move on.
All right. I, I see council concurrence. I don't believe this to be a formal discussion. Everyone has indicated they would like to do that. What that means is if someone does wish to speak, the doors to this chamber are open. They are able to come downtown. It's 150 City Parkway, City Council chambers. They can come and participate in person.
Okay, thank you. We'll move into item H2. This next item is related to the historical display at Davis Campsite. And our Assistant City Manager, Darren Gale, will present. Darren.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I know it's already getting late, so I'll try to shorten this presentation as relates to the two items that I have before you this evening. So tonight, I have the opportunity to speak to you about the former Davis, Davis Campsite and a historical display. As many of you might know, the former Davis camp is located on the corner of Brentwood Boulevard and Sunset Road, basically in this map that I, that I created. And the, the camp actually might have been bigger than this, but just to give you an idea of base, of where we currently are and where the current streets are. This lot at, at one time was more or less a dump. It was owned by the county and Mr. Cal Davis from Oklahoma had an opportunity to purchase the property and agreed to clean it up. And during that time, in the late 1920s, early 1930s, this camp became known as a camp where no one went hungry. And two of the pictures that you see are from Dorothea Lange, who's very famous for her Depression-era photography. And thanks to the East Contra Costa Historical Society, Mary Casey Black, who's here this evening, Sharon Wilson Ellenson, Steve Verduzco, who's here, and Doreen Forlow, they've all been helping through this process. His staff has met with them. Background, the property was acquired by the city in 2007 to remediate blight. And they demolished a majority of the, of the property, other than the current building that's there, which was, which was being leased by Los Mexicanos Restaurant. With the elimination of the redevelopment agencies in 2020, the city council declared the, the property surplus. And the Surplus Land Act has continued to change, and we're finally at the process where we're moving forward with trying to sell all these properties. And in 2022, the city purchased a portion of it for the widening of Brent, Brentwood Boulevard. And either towards the end of this year or early next year, the existing building is scheduled to be demolished. That's currently on the site. And, and that, that building is a building that's been there for a long time and was known as the Davis Log Cabin Grocery Store. And then in June of 2023, this agenda item was requested by the city council, by Vice Mayor Meyer, and, and regarding a historical display to be located at the, the Davis Campsite. So currently, the property that is owned by the former redevelopment agency is here. Immediately to the north is property that's owned by East Bay Mud. And the city has a contract to maintain the pathway that's, that's along the property. As we've talked with the proposed project, we've worked in a partnership with the East Contra Costa Historical Society. And based upon those meetings, the, the idea that's being proposed this evening, and we're asking for direction, is one to install historical interpretive displays somewhere between two and five. The Historical Society will work with putting together the information that would be included here. And then if feasible, installing additional landscaping trees, benches, and benches near the historical interpretive displays. The idea is to have it located somewhere on the Davis property. Based upon our contract with East Bay Mud, we may or may not be able to locate any new physical structure on their property. When I say physical structure, they basically, based upon our conversations with Parks and Rec, anything other than the grass that's currently there, we don't have an agreement to do. So either we'll have to locate this on the current former redevelopment agency parcel. We'd have to go through the process of purchasing, doing a, doing a, some type of subdivision to create a, a parcel. And it would be, and that's where it'd be located. Or if we can work through our contract with East Bay Mud, it would then be located on their property. But we don't want to promise anything, so we want the council to know that it'll be one, one or the other. Either way, the project would be accessible from the trail and not through the private property of, of a future development. As we've worked with the Historical Society, they requested that the, that the display be located, let's see if I can get my, my mouse, here on, on the far east portion of the property. And the reason they, they mentioned that was that they thought that that was an area that could be quiet and residents would have an opportunity to, to be able to read the interpretive display and, and participate a little bit of quiet versus being right on the corner. I, I don't think that that was a make or break, but that was kind of the, the discussion that, that had been discussed. And so this evening, what we're looking for, so there's the map that shows the current property lines, and then kind of the location being somewhere either on the redevelopment agency parcel or the parcel immediately adjacent to the north. So, so this evening, we're really looking for city council to give additional direction. If you're okay with moving forward with the interpretive display, I think the Historical Society, one thing they wanted to make sure was that this is just not a plaque that's somewhere on, you know, in the sidewalk or, or even on some type of rock monument. They really want something so that people can sit there, look out over the property and understand the importance, not only of what the Davis cap, camp meant to Brentwood, but possibly some of the other camps that were located throughout the city and, and far east Contra Costa County. So this time, I can answer any questions. And I know that we have members from the Historical Society that would love to speak this evening.
Are there any clarifying questions, Vice Mayor?
I do want to make sure that the, whatever this ends up being, this display is protected. And I know that part of this whole area is zoned for commercial. So how much do we have to be concerned about that? Is there a chance that, for example, a two-story building is built there which overshadows where this display is, and so people don't have as easy access, or the visual isn't there?
So since the property is a former redevelopment agency, we're not able to restrict the use. And so any development that comes forward would be able to do whatever development is, is allowed under the specific plan. The property is zoned for the Brentwood Boulevard specific plan. And so there's a kind of a, it's a pretty broad use. Could there be a building, Vice Mayor Meyer? There could be. But the idea would be to hopefully make this, that hopefully they would see it and, you know, maybe they'd want to include it as part of their project, but the access would not be required to be through their property. It would be through the, the adjacent existing trail.
So is there a way to specifically protect that, that?
Yeah. So the area that's improved would be protected. We just want to be able to protect the land immediately adjacent to it.
And do we have any challenges due to the Surplus Land Act?
So yes. However, if the city wanted to purchase a portion of it, we, the city council is able to do that. So we don't have to go through a long, drawn-out process of the Surplus Land Act if the city's purchasing. And, and when I say the city was purchasing, it would really be something small, maybe a couple hundreds, 200, 300 square feet to install the entire facility. The idea is to make it adjacent to a trail that the city is already maintaining, and that it wouldn't be a huge additional cost to maintain any new improvements.
Okay. And am I correct in, in understanding that the parcel immediately north is zoned for parks?
That is, Bruce, do you know that off the top of your head, or Alexis? It looks like it's East Bay Mud and Private Right Away, which has three large waters.
Kind of thing than it would be a park, okay?
Yeah, it's open space in the specific plan.
Okay. And have we explored the idea of moving the memorial to that, or are we allowed to border that somehow so it still is in the same area? It still overlooks the same area, but it's more protected?
So I, I think ideally, it would be nice to include it on the East Bay Mud property if we're allowed. So that, that would be one way to protect it. And did I answer your question?
Yeah. I mean, I definitely want to hear from the Historical Society about some opinions on that as well. But how do we know if we'd be allowed to build it there?
So that'll be, if the council approves us moving forward, we will move forward with connecting with East Bay Mud and seeing what we can or cannot do on their property. One of the items that we'd love direction for on is, is a location. So if you want it closer to the corner, let us know. And that's where we'll work on. If you're okay with what's currently being proposed, we'll continue in, in that location. It'll either be on the former redevelopment agency parcel, or it'll be on the East Bay Mud.
Okay. And do we have some sort of a budget for the, the project itself, and if we ended up having to buy that land?
We do not, but we would come back to the city council for approval if we need to purchase the property. Also approves, the, the project will need to receive some type of funding allocation, and we would be back before the city council for that request.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions.
I have a question. You just said that's part of the Brentwood specific plan and anything can get built there. What are the restrictions on that surplus land?
Oh, so surplus land? So when, when I said anything, there's, I apologize. Thank you for the clarification.
Because I was thinking a park would be beautiful.
So if, if, could, could a park be placed there? Probably. There would be a process that you'd have to go through, but I'll, I'll let Alexis respond to that portion.
Sure. I just had that section of the specific plan opened, and then I scrolled down to the map. So give me a minute. So it's general commercial, which allows retail, restaurant uses as permitted uses. It does not list a park as a permitted use. But the city council could do a specific plan amendment to change these designations. It would require a change just to that section of the specific plans, so just that corner is general commercial. The properties around it are not also general commercial.
But if we look at the map, that whole section where Los Mexicanos is, that whole section is commercial?
Yeah, I can call up the map if you'd like. From the specific plan, would that be helpful?
Yeah, because for some reason, I thought we couldn't make a park there. For some reason, I was under that impression. But if we can, if the Brentwood specific plan allows us to, like, to kind of puzzle piece stuff, like if there's a park that has to go into the Brentwood specific plan somewhere?
Well, so the, there's, there's two different aspects of making a park there. One is just the technical land use designation, and the other is budgeting, programming, you know, those are separate issues. So the council could potentially amend the specific plan to change that land use designation to open space, for example, right, which would allow a park. But there's operational and fiscal issues with potentially programming a park there. So I'm, I'm not sure if that's the feedback you got. But this is, I have the map if you'd like to open it.
Well, actually, we've now started to move beyond the item on the agenda, which is a monument signed for the Davis camp. And we're talking about reprogramming the property to something else.
Well, now, now I have another future agenda item with my other three.
So, so Councilmember Mendoza, one additional item. If, if we were to purchase the property, it would be based upon an appraisal, which would be on today's zoning, which is general commercial. And.
Which is lower than residential, from what I've heard.
If we can move on back to the topic or maybe open the public comment.
Okay.
Oh, I'm just waiting for, for one more thing. But no, okay. Is there any further clarifying questions of staff? I know someone mentioned you'd like to speak to the Historical Society, ask them questions regarding that before we open public comments. Clarifying questions from Historical Society, seeing none, we will open public comments.
Please file a speaker card on the form provided on the counter at the back of the chambers. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person, and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I do have two speaker cards for this item. Doreen Forlow and Mary Black, Mary Casey Black.
Oh, I have a green light. Thank you. I don't know if this is appropriate, but I have nothing to say but comment, nothing to say but compliments. So I wanted to thank the city council for hearing us when we were before you a couple of months ago, speaking about this property. And so I'd like to just thank all of you for listening to us and making a comment and making a proposal so we could move forward on it. I'd also like to compliment and thank the city manager, Assistant City Manager, and Parks and Rec for working with us. I think we've met three times. It's all been productive. And you've heard, I thank you very much for representing what we had said. And they represented us perfectly. And I think I just want to say thank you, which was unusual for tonight. So, thanks.
Next speaker is Mary Black.
And my comments will be similar. I'm, I would like to thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, city staff for everything you do. I am always in awe of all the topics that you handle in one evening, and so graciously. I speak this evening on behalf of the East Contra Costa Historical Society, and we would like to express our appreciation to the city of Brentwood for the consideration given to this Davis camp project. Public comments, as Darren mentioned in his presentation, made by Sharon Ellenson and Doreen Forlow at an earlier city council meeting about Davis camp and the role that it's played in our area's history, were moved forward to an agenda item by Vice Mayor Meyer. Thank you, Susanna, for recognizing the importance of this area to our community. And thank you, Darren, Assistant City Manager, who met with us at the Davis camp site, hiked out in the heat and the dirt and the stickers and everything else to explore the options for how to best commemorate the historical significance of not only this place, but the era, the era that it represents of Brentwood's history. You're a good listener, Darren, and we appreciate the time and attention you've given to help capture the significance of the human story that's part of Brentwood's history that's represented here. Thank you to you and to Bruce, the Parks and Rec Department, who've drawn upon Brentwood's planning to propose the interpretive center area that we share in our history in a meaningful way. And we look really, we really look forward to working with you on this project and presenting something that will be lasting to the history of our community, not just today, but for the future. Thank you all, and thank you for everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no additional speaker cards.
Thank you. At this time, we will close public comments. And before we get into council discussion, I will say, we so appreciate what, what the Historical Society does in our community and everything that you represent. So thank, thank you for allowing us to partner potentially with this. Council discussion. Vice Mayor.
As, as we are an agricultural community, and as we have grown over the decades to be less and less identified that way, and we've, we've all struggled to, to maintain as much of that identity as we can. And, and we've done a good job with our harvest time and farmers markets and things like that, and like the farm stands. I think this is really important, this really, this piece of history that a lot of people can refer to and, and contemplate and go and read about. There was an uproar online initially when this topic came up, and there was a lot of people that emailed me their family stories. I received emails from Martinez, from their Historical Society, talking about photographers that had been active here back when this first was, was happening in the Dust Bowl era. And it was really, it was, it felt good, and I'm sure it kind of felt good for everyone to approve moving this forward, because it is something that we can do to preserve history and to preserve our legacy. And to recognize that, that you've all worked really hard on this. I know that every one of you here, representing this item, has put a lot of thought and effort and, and heart into this. So I want to thank you and make sure that, that you're getting the appropriate recognition here. The memorial is, is what you're looking for. And it sounds like it is. And I, I'm really happy to hear that staff worked with you to the extent that you're, that may do this happy about all of it. It's, it's very nice to hear tonight. So I, my, my big question, and I, and I kind of, maybe Darren can answer this question, because it still remains for me, is would it be safer for us to move it to the East Bay Mud land so that it overlooks the Davis camp land? And is the Historical Society okay with that?
So, so staff's recommendation is to try to place this on the East Bay Mud property, which at one time was part of the entire Davis campsite. So as much as we say, you know, we speak of not being on the Davis campsite, it really is. It's just that the property has been subdivided and, and another user is using a portion of it. So we had that meeting. They have no problem with it being located on that exists. So we had that meeting. They have no problem with it being located on that existing right away that's owned by East Bay mud.
So then that would be basically a move of 10 feet, am I understanding?
Correct. That's, that's what we want to include it. Just, I just want to make sure the council understands we're going to do our best. We don't know what East Bay mud is going to tell us.
Right. So that'll come back along with budget and, and more schematics about what this would actually look like?
Yep, exactly.
And then what potentially what Councilmember Mendoza is talking about as far as the park, regardless of whether that ends up happening, we're still safe and protected and in a space that can be very contemplative and peaceful and all those good things, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I did want to mention quickly to Mary Casey Black, since I was at the Historical Society barbecue and the Eagle Scout was presenting the project he made. That was one of my first thoughts was, wouldn't it be great if he could get, or another Eagle Scout could make a project out of this that would be involved with the city? I thought that would be fantastic. But yes, I am, I'm happy to move forward with this. I'm really excited that we get to do something so positive, especially after the night that we've had. And looking forward to other people's comments as well, but I'll be happy to make a motion when we're ready. Thank you.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yeah, I love this. You know, I love it. You guys know I love you over there, the Historic Society, some of my favorite people over there. And what you guys do for our community, I appreciate you guys keeping us mindful of the history of Brentwood. And I love the idea. I love what it looks like. My only concern was just the placement of it. And I, and I suggested even when we went over our council review, can we just put it right there? Because I want anybody who walks that path to be able to see it and then not to later be obstructed by buildings or a gas station or, God forbid, a car wash. I'm being, I'm joking. Right, right. Be careful, right? But I just didn't want it to be blocked or obscured. So I'm hoping that we can move it to that corner where East Bay mud is at, but I'm happy to have it approved.
I also want to thank you. It was amazing going through the process. And I remember when we originally talked about it. I wasn't as sure as I am now, having heard and seen what we're actually talking about. The, Davis camp existed when I first came here and I used to go out there. So it does bring back a lot of memories. It brings back a lot of history of the way Brentwood has always been, the agricultural community. When we were doing, when we were sitting down for a gender review, Councilmember Pearson and I began talking about maybe that area closer to the sidewalks so that people passing by would be enticed to come see it as opposed to so far off and just on the Marsh Creek Trail. Not saying that has to be where it is, just the consideration of the East Bay mud land. It would all be the same piece of land. But thank you all for all your hard work and efforts. Thank you.
And I want to say thank you also for coming out. I'll have a future agenda item in a little bit. And thank you, Vice Mayor Meyer, for working on this. I know you've put a lot of time and effort. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I want to thank you again. Just, I'll, I'll leave it to you experts as far as the design of everything. But I think it would be lovely to have maybe an old farm implement of something that was part of the actual stand. Again, I'm not the expert, but, but an actual piece of the history of that time, I think would be very cool too. And at this time, do we have a motion for this item?
Yes. One quick thing I want to mention, I loved whoever came up with that idea about allowing the society to go into the building to see if there's anything they can keep for the Historical Society. I thought that would, that was brilliant. Maybe there's something additional that can be left right there. Okay, so I, as detailed in the staff report, I move that the city continues working with this Historical Society to design a display to be located actually on or near the Davis camp property, but on the East Bay mud side and on what looks like the northeastern corner, based on the preference of this Historical Society. Darren, is that a way to describe that?
Yes.
Okay. That recognizes the significance of the site and its contribution to Brentwood history and return with a draft layout and design for council consideration.
I want to, oh, sorry. No, I want to second that, but I'm wondering, what if East Bay mud says no? Do you want to give additional direction?
That is a good idea. If East Bay no, East Bay no, if East Bay mud is very specific in their negative response, then I would assume we would go back to what's actually on the map right here, which is just on the other side. And the fact that it's alongside the trail, I think that takes care of people walking by and seeing it the way we're hoping to. Is that clear? Okay.
Okay, and I will second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Passes. Thank you. We will now move into item.
Oh my God, which one? It should be G2.
G2. And item G2 is confirming and ordering the formation of a landscape and lighting assessment district number 23-1. And Erin Wandon will present. Erin?
And he's going to give the two-minute version.
Slow-moving it this time. Good evening, mayor and city council members. In accordance with the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972 and Proposition 218, this item is the last step in the approval process to form Landscape and Lighting Assessment District number 23-1 Orchard Grove. If this district is formed, an annual assessment can be levied on the 45 single-family residential homes and six attached residential duets associated with this project to fund the cost to operate and maintain city streetlights, landscaping, parks, trails, and open space areas that benefit these parcels. The proposed maximum assessment rate is $1,618.79 per single-family parcel. And therefore, the estimated maximum revenue that can be generated is approximately $80,130. These figures are in fiscal year 2023-24. This maximum assessment rate can be increased each subsequent fiscal year by the annual change in the Consumer Price Index or 2%, whichever is greater. The formation of this new district does require property owner approval before the city council can form the district. A notice and ballot was mailed to the affected property owner as required by Proposition 218. The ballot can be opened and tabulated by the city clerk after the close of the public input portion of the public hearing this evening. If the property owner's ballot is favorable, city council would then be able to adopt the attached resolution, which would give your approval of the final engineer's report and confirm the formation of Landscape and Lighting Assessment District number 23-1 Orchard Grove. Myself and the city's consultant are available for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any clarifying questions of staff on this item? Seeing none. This time I will now open the public hearing and call on the city clerk.
Please file a speaker card on the form provided on the counter at the back of the chambers. Remarks are limited to three minutes per person and your microphone will be muted after the timer has expired. I don't have any speaker cards for this item and I don't see anybody in the chambers wishing to speak.
Okay. The election in this matter is hereby called and are there any additional ballots to be submitted?
I don't see any in the chambers.
Okay. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second?
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
It is unanimous. If you have any additional questions or wish to express comments on the agenda item, I'll call on you at this time. Seeing none, I will consider a motion on this item.
As detailed, oh, no? Yes?
Actually, I believe it would be number 10.
Wait, it'd be?
On page four of 10.
We're out of time.
Do you want to make it?
Yeah, you can make it.
You can second.
Confirm the, confirm the formation of the simple majority property owner approval weighted by assessment amount. That is my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Okay, this time I'm going to ask the city clerk to tabulate the ballots and read the results.
We have one ballot. Should have brought a letter opener. And the ballot is an affirmative yes vote.
Okay, are there any clarifying questions of staff at this time on this item? Okay, seeing none, is there any further council discussion on this item or do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion as detailed in the staff report to move to adopt a resolution ordering the formation of Landscape and Lighting Assessment District number 23-1 and taking all implementing action.
Okay, we have a first.
A second?
A second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Item moves. We will move into item H1. Our next item is a review of the Ethics and Conduct Policy and Erin Gale will present.
Mr. Mayor, before Mr. Gale presents, considering, I would like to see if I can make some form of motion to ask that H1 be moved to a future agenda. I feel like there didn't, didn't have enough sufficient time to, to do a more thorough investigation to find out more information. And, and I think this one needs more time and attention to detail. So I would, I would be asking that we move this to the, to the next agenda.
Before we get consensus with, with council, is there someone in the audience? Can we, we'll open public comments at this time on this item. Is that permissible?
It's at the pleasure of the council. If, even if you wish to continue the matter, you can certainly take a public comment if there's someone here that would like to, like to speak on it or be up to them.
Absolutely. Okay, then at this time we'll open public comments on this item.
I do have one speaker card for this item. Rod Forlow?
Yeah, thank you. And three minutes is a little short, don't you think, since nobody's going to be around to make comments? I drove down here to make a comment on this item, just to watch you continue it. I think what I want to say first of all is I'm very disappointed in this council that you would close down public comments on Zoom. I'm an American first. I do not, and I do not expect my fellow Americans to let Nazis shut down our democracy. People have the right to speak. They have the right to be heard. And if some crank caller wants to make some comment, we just have to bear it. We're Americans. We're not, we're not, you know. All right, so about the ethics, I see I have to the future to make my comment, but I'll start. I did like the Carlsbad version of the ethics. I'd like to hear more about the active listening things. I don't know if you read it, but they talk about actively listening to your public commenters, engaging with them, getting, asking them clarifying questions, all things that we claim we can't do here. And I would love to hear from that consultant about how that can be done. My understanding is that at least the mayor, or in the case of planning commission, the chair, can address the commenter and I think that would be appropriate. I think, I believe what I liked about it was the respect for the public. The, the constant, through, through that whole document, they talk about listening to the public, caring about it. And I'd go further. I would say that the public, the public before you are Brentwoodians. We are the people and I am a Brentwoodian. We're the people. We bought into this community. We came here, we bought in here, we live here, we support this town, we love this town. And I think the residents, whenever this council, whenever the planning commission, whenever anybody of this city has discretion, we should exercise that discretion to the benefit of the people of Brentwood and not to the benefit, first and foremost, of whoever is in front of us asking for something. The people come first, always. That's my principle when I set up on planning commission. That's what I told you when I came in here and asked for that shot, for that job. And that's what I do. I listen to the public and I try to represent them as best as I can, given the extreme limitations we've been given, especially with the latest state things. But limiting us to three minutes tonight is not appropriate, especially when we only have public comment in the room now, unless you want to open up Zoom again. If you want to find yourself and be a man.
I have no additional speaker cards.
Okay, at this time then we will close public comment. And is it the council's wish that we move this to a future agenda?
If there could be a motion and a second and a vote, you can do that.
Okay, do I have a motion to move this item to a future agenda?
I'd like to make a motion that we move this to the next, to a future agenda, preferably the next council meeting, to give us more time to flesh out what we received and so that we can have a fruitful conversation with specific details of what we would like to have in the Ethics and Conduct Policy or what we'd like to have removed from it.
Okay, we have a first.
Oh, second.
And a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. It passes. Was it four to one? Okay. All right, moving on to item I2D.
Mayor, would you like to do new agenda items request I1 or I2 first? If you have new, seven of 10, sorry, top of that page.
Yes, let's do the new agenda items first.
I have a few. When it comes to Davis camp, I was under the impression that it had to be homes for some reason. Like I thought it had to be residential is what we were under the impression of. But now I'd like to go back for a future agenda item and see what the land value is and do we think it's worth purchasing it and what we could do with it to have a little bit more open space over there. I think it would honor the history nicely. Maybe it could put a little commercial, like, I don't know, like a Gott's roadside or something. But so I'd like to, that's my first agenda item. What are the, what would be the, the value of the land if we had to buy it? And is it, does the rest of the council, how do they feel about it?
Councilmember Mendoza, can I just make a clarification? There's two different properties. So the Davis camp property and then on the other side of the stream is a parcel that was purchased with redevelopment funds for, set aside for, for low-income housing. So that property is separate. And I believe when we were speaking of which ones had to be housing, it's the property on the other side of the drainage canal.
This one.
So the one to the right of that. If I can put up a map so we can see it if you'd like, real quick.
So who owns this one? I just want to make sure that my agenda item, we're talking about the same parcel.
You're talking about the parcel behind the Los Mexicanos market, I believe.
Is that, is that the one I'm talking about?
Okay, just put up a map up.
Okay, there. That one that's highlighted.
So this is the one that we talked about, the Davis camp?
Mm-hmm.
These parcels over here are the ones that are restricted for affordable housing based upon the dollars, based upon the funding that purchased those parcels.
Yes, so I'm talking about the one in red.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, so that's the first agenda item. The second one is something that came up at the conference last week. I would like to explore having subcommittees to create the standard design guidelines for, for our developments. It came up in conversation and some cities are very specific and they have like a subcommittee with two council people and then a couple of residents. And they go over every single standard. So kind of how like I said, you know, I, I want this kind of tile or this kind of roof or not that kind of roof. They go through every single thing. They were saying that they get handed standard designs that match every other city. And they're like, our city's specific. We know what we want it to look like. So I'd like to explore having that standard design review committee and then a committee, a budget review committee. I was surprised that most cities have budget review committees. We don't have that. So we get to a meeting and none of us really know the details. Like we just know kind of high level. So it'd be, I think it'd be beneficial to have a couple of us on the budget review that really get into the weeds and under, like even today. I didn't even know that we had another fund for the pool equipment that was out of another fund. Because I'm like, wasn't this the same fund we, park fund that we used for the sports complex? So I think there's all of these funds and all of this money. And we never, I don't ever see it talked about in that detail. And I think we probably need to understand it a little bit more. And if two of us knew about. And if two of us knew about, you know, opportunity dollars, then if something comes up, they're like, oh, well, we have this fund, right? Like, we don't know that right now. So those are the three future agenda items. Can we put, how much would it be for the land at Davis Camp? A sub, a budget subcommittee and a standard design guideline subcommittee? That one would end as soon as we finished our standard design guidelines.
A few clarifications, so to get an appraisal on the Davis Camp property, to see if we can purchase it from the redevelopment agency, is that the request?
Yes.
Is it also to make it a park and what that process looks like or no?
Well, it's, yeah, let's see, if we could purchase it, then can we make it a park or can we split it? I mean, I know it was commercial, can we put part commercial on it? Like, I mean, I, just what would that vision look like if we did something to honor the history and maybe do a little bit of economic development if possible?
Okay, so it sounds like get an appraisal for it, what's the process to purchase it looks like? And then a process to rezone it as a park from the general commercial and the specific plan?
Yeah.
Okay. On the subcommittee, you said standard design guidelines, is that for residential, commercial or both?
I would say both.
Both?
Yeah.
So with the consultant that we already have in place, how would Alexis, maybe a quick update?
And that's the thing, is most city councils get it and they're working along with their staff, like they email it out, we've never, we don't talk about that kind of stuff. So I feel like we're a little bit in the dark. So if it's the standard one that the consultant does the same for everyone, I don't think that's going to work for us, I think we're going to have to redo it anyway.
Well, so there's something underway to develop objective design standards. So that is for residential specifically, and that's what we're coming back to council in a workshop to discuss those detailed objective design standards, because right now we have interim, right? So the permanent are coming, that would start with a workshop of council, Planning Commission, and then go to LUD to review those objective design standards, have, you know, meetings with the public and then finalize those. So those would apply to residential properties and those would be reviewed by, those are brand new, right? So those would be reviewed by council, Planning Commission and have opportunity for public comment. Once those are adopted, then those would just be a checklist that would be a part of design review for projects. Commercial projects are subject to the commercial design guidelines that were adopted by council in 2001. So I'm not sure if when you're, if we could clarify what you mean by bring it to councils with a development application?
No, they're working, they're, these other councils are working with their planning department to come up with the guidelines.
And so that's what the objective design standards process would be, that just applies to residential.
So they're spending meetings and meetings, like two councilpeople and the public and a couple of people from planning, going through all of the pros and cons of everything. But no, you're, what you want to do is all of us together, this is more intimate and smaller, which is sometimes easier.
Sure, and so there will be multiple types of meetings for the objective design standards process, and Damian's raised his microphone, so I'll just say, LUD would be the two council members that we would be working with typically on those objective design standards, and that was our intent. There'll be more meetings than that, but it would be LUD that we would be, you know, having more detailed meetings with.
Okay, how soon do we think that is coming to us?
Well, there's a lot on our plate right now. So we are doing the zoning in November and planning on objective design standard workshops in January and then throughout next year.
Have you started any work on the standard design guidelines?
Well, yes, we brought a consultant on board, we, you adopted interim standards, so we did that work, and then the consultant is going to start that workshop to get council feedback on what they want in those guidelines, and then there'll be multiple meetings after that.
I guess my concern is from now until then, until they're done, we don't have guidelines, so they can kind of do whatever they want, which is what we've been seeing.
No, we have, I'm sorry, for residential, you adopted interim objective design standards because we needed to have those in place.
So if we want tighter guidelines, do my agenda item need to be, we as each councilperson can review the guidelines and be nitpicky and then come with those nitpicky items as an agenda item instead of doing what I want to do?
So your agenda item can be whatever you want it to be, I just want to make sure I understand what it is, and I just want to make you aware that there is an effort underway that council approved the budget for, for the objective design standards, which are very important under new state laws. There will be a council workshop, a planning commission workshop, and then opportunities for LUD to meet on that multiple times.
But that's not till January?
The first workshop won't be until January, and there won't be any bandwidth for staff to work on this the rest of this year, there just isn't.
Yeah, no, and so then, I guess my question is, because I'm.
Well, we have a workshop scheduled November 14th, correct?
That's for the zoning, so there's two major projects that staff is undertaking, a zoning ordinance update and the objective design standards.
Okay, so then I guess my question is, if, if the council, it's like if I read something in there and I compare it to other cities and I'm like, you know, I like this one better than that one, can I bring an agenda item that then says, hey, can we update this portion of the design standards? I think this would be better for the city, hey, council, how do you guys feel about it? Can we update the standards that we have now ad hoc if needed?
And I know we're trying to clarify this request, but we're starting to more go into the request itself that you probably have at your next.
Okay, so then let's bring an agenda item about how to ad hoc update standardized design guidelines, because January is just way too far and we have developments coming in.
I, yes, I would, I think I could talk to you offline about this a little bit and explain to you what is happening and what's already in the works and what's in place that does apply to projects. So it's not an blank slate right now, we do have standards that council adopted that applies to these projects. So we, if that's your request, we can talk about it at the next meeting, but I'm also happy to talk to you offline, just to give you the whole picture of what we're doing with these design standards.
Okay, so let's, future item to review how to ad hoc update standardized guidelines, if there's any attributes that we want to change, and in the meantime, I'll, we can talk, and then if that satisfies it, then I'll cancel my future agenda item.
All right, and Alexis, if I may, the request as it stands, do you have, are you, do you understand that?
Yes, how to amend the design standards on an ad hoc basis versus the project that we're already underway with.
And that converts perfectly.
That wasn't very articulate.
Thank you very much.
So I have future agenda item. One, I would like to create a citywide racial equity plan to provide a blueprint of the city's intentions to improve outcomes for people of color, women, LGBTQ+, senior and the disabled community, by creating, by outlining citywide goals and agency-specific strategies for accomplishing these goals. It's one of mine. My next request is that we create a resolution on anti-racism and anti-hate crime or a policy. I'd like staff attention, I'm a staff, resources, time, to be put to determining whether we need a resolution or a policy on anti-racism and anti-hate crime. That would, this information to also be included or directives by staff on how we can make sure that this is included not only on our website, but on the police department's website, on all citywide marketing and materials. I would like to have staff time and attention to review Municipal Code Section 2.46.02, Powers and Duties of Parks and Rec Commission, and any other parts of the municipal code where it's no longer enforceable. Specifically in 2.46.02 subsection I and subsection L, seems that we've determined it is not legal. So I'd like to make sure we need to either remove it or to modify it. So that is another future agenda item request.
Councilmember Pearson, before you leave that one, you focused on those two, but you also made a broader statement of any other section of the code that might not conform with current law. Did you want both or just focus initially on?
I would like both, yes. The last one, I would like staff time and attention to be placed on the creation of an Ethics and Conduct Policy for all of our commissions with the exclusion of the implementation and enforcement.
Okay, are there any further future agenda items?
I forgot one item. Oh, go ahead. I forgot one. I think we need to look at, again, there are other cities where the directors report into council, and I think we just need to talk about the pros and the cons. And I'm almost thinking that that comes in the future, after our investigation of Park and Rec. But I do think it's something that we need to discuss, depend, you know, based on outcome.
So you're moving forward with that now?
Bring it forward next time, just to discuss a little bit, because then we can have a discussion about and see how they're feeling about it, which I can't find out right now, and then we'll go from there.
Ready? The first is, is around our proclamations process, and we did, I think it was last year, change it so that not every single proclamation is read aloud, that they are added to the consent calendar so that we can pull the ones that are specific to people who are in chambers. Last time and this time, we had multiple, multiple people involved in presenting. Today, multiple people involved in receiving, and that's not necessarily a bad thing, but I think we need to clean up the process a little. If we, if we know in advance, here are the proclamations for next month, then we can reach out and find out if there has been any of them claimed, if you will. But what I'm concerned about is if we end up, like if all five of us have an idea about somebody we think would be a perfect recipient, do we do all five? Do we vote on it? I mean, we need a process to clean this up a little bit. And I'm pretty open on having staff make the recommendations about what would be the most efficient. I don't ever want to turn someone away who we feel like is a really good recipient for a proclamation, but the way things are going, we, it has the potential for being a little cluttered for some meetings, and I just would like to look at other ways to, to clean it up, make sure that there's a process so that there is an equitable, equitable process to make sure that people get recognized. Any questions on that one, are we clear?
I'm just thinking through what to do with that. We have a policy now, it says the mayor presents them, so by default, the mayor's been allowing others to make recommendations and also present that, so we've been doing kind of first come, first served, if there's more than one, then more than one. Are you recommending first only?
No.
As a way to solve that?
Not necessarily, I just think, there are times when someone will, will suggest a proclamation for a particular person and maybe not even understand that someone else has a really deep connection to that, and they might be willing to back off if they knew, but we aren't having, we aren't having discussions about it, we're just, we're throwing things out at staff and then we're just letting it all happen. I'm not trying to take anything away from anyone, I just want to see if there's a way to make this a little more clean, so that if there are multiple recipients suggested, that there isn't a conflict, that everyone agrees, like, I mean, I don't see this happening, but what if one person suggests something and another person on council is like, I don't agree with that? I don't think that's an appropriate fit. So I just think there needs to be a little bit more of a clear process to get to where we're making these presentations, and I think it's not, it's not as much about the numbers, it's about just making sure it's a clear process and a fair process. So I'd just like some recommendations on that. The other one is something that I'm mentioning now, but the committee that I'm going to be bringing up would be, of course, at the beginning of the year. I have forwarded a couple of California Department of Aging grant opportunities to staff that would be around designated Brentwood as an age-friendly community. But for us to have taken, applied for these grants, we would have needed to be further along in the process of becoming an age-friendly community. There's a lot of detail around this, but in effect, there's an agency, the WHO Global Network of Age-Friendly Cities and Communities, that designates cities. Because of the Master Plan for Aging and its focus on the five bold goals, one of them being housing, my thought was we would, we would focus on the housing aspect. There are two nonprofits that I spoke with and I connected staff with that have some programs that would help our senior residents to stay in their own homes if they can't afford them any longer, to have a safety net around them so they could live independently more safely for a longer period of time. So I'm trying to figure out a way to kind of wrap these into an ad hoc committee at the beginning of the year that is around how Brentwood could prepare the ideas for becoming an age-friendly community so when these grant opportunities come, we are ready to actually apply for them. Good?
Good, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Please don't hate me, I forgot one. And I think this came up earlier, the creation of a Race and Equity Committee of the council.
Okay, are there any further future agenda item requests? Okay, seeing none. We will move into item 12D. Councilmember Pearson, this request is from Councilmember Pearson regarding a review of the adopted utility rate studies and provide data to Councilmember Mendoza to do her own calculations. Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at the meeting on September 12th, I requested specifically a future agenda item, request for staff time and funding to re-review the rate study. That being said, I want to make sure that my specific request was, one, that Councilmember Mendoza, per her request, obtain all the necessary information that she needed to do her specific calculations of the rate study. And after her, having her, you know, do her calculations, I'd like to specifically request staff time and funding to re-review the study with a consultant, the consultant we worked with before, to review hers, look at their findings, and that that work, Councilmember Mendoza had the right to present it to council, with the consultant also reviewing the work and presenting their findings too to council after she's done it.
Okay, at this time I will open public comments regarding this item, is there anyone?
If you're in person, please file a speaker card if you're in person. Rod, go ahead.
Forgive me on the speaker card, it's not required, and I don't have any major objections to this. I think this is a really good idea. I think people care about their utility rates, and I'll be honest with you, the reason I'm standing here speaking right now is because I'm not going to let a bunch of crank callers take away my right to speak. And again, I'm disappointed that you would let them control what you do, thank you.
Thank you, I have no additional speakers.
Okay, at this time then we will close public comments, move into council discussion. Councilmember Mendoza.
So my ask was just on residential, because people are seeing it come in at like 6.5%. And we said, when we sat here in this meeting, we asked, is it 5%? Is it 5%? Is it 5%? And we were told, it's 5%. 5% is what you're going to see. And that's not what it's coming in, and I also have concerns that I didn't realize, because the math wasn't there in the packet, that it's escalating, which concerns me because we have families that, like double up families in one house, so it's punitive to those bigger families, I thought it was 5% for every tier on water increase. So I just want to review it, and it would be eight data points times last year 12 months plus the latest one month, so rolling 13 months, times the number of houses. So I think it's, I mean, how many houses do we have in Brentwood, like 25,000 or so?
About 20,000 accounts.
Yeah, so that, I mean, it's, it's less than 2.4 million data points, which is like nothing, so, I mean, that's one data poll, you know, that's easy. So, and then what I could do with that is just take it, put it in the model, you know, and then figure out exactly if everyone's usage was the same as last year, like anything over-usage, that's on them, but if the usage remained the same as last year, what would that increase look like? And, and if it's over 5, we just have to have that conversation and we have to be honest with our residents, because that's where it just, that, well, with me, that I voted on something and I might have misunderstood or I, I, you know, so that was my request.
Just with one clarification, the rate that was adjusted is 6.5% for water. It's 2% for wastewater and then solid waste at a different rate, but that wasn't quite made, that clarification wasn't made at the last meeting, but just want to make sure that's clear today, and it's 6.5 was the rate increase that was made.
But when we added everything together, wasn't it 5%? Like we added the water, the sewer, like when we saw all those bars and it was 5.55?
I have it on the screen if you want me to show it to you, but it's 6.5 for the water.
Okay, so just, if you could send the data and then.
Different meters had different increases, but the one-inch meter, which is 90% of all the customers, because it's residential, that's the 6.5.
That's fine, if I could just get the data and I'll run it and then we'll go from there. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on this item? Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that staff spend time and resources to get Councilmember Mendoza all of the numbers that she needs to run her calculations and that staff be allowed to spend time and resources to work with the consultant, to review her calculations, and that she be allowed to present, as well as the consultant be allowed to present the findings on the rate study, to see if there are any issues with what we voted on, or if there are not.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, item moves forward. Item I to E. Consider a request of September 12th, 2023, from Councilmember Mendoza regarding amendments to the special events application. Councilmember Mendoza?
Yeah, this just came about based on resident feedback and downtown feedback. We need to do something about the garbage after events. And it, it's a lot of events, but we probably need to add something to our events contract about cleaning up. And if you don't, what's the chargeback if our staff has to go and clean up after the fact? So that was the biggest one. But after this weekend too, I got a couple, you know, I got some videos about the ice being dumped on the park when the kids were walking around to take pictures. So we just kind of, if we're going to have events one after the other, we probably need to come up with some guidelines around that as well. Because we're having a lot of events. So until we decide, are we going to cut back from events or move events? We probably should have some guidelines, just to make sure our downtown stays nice and clean and, and that we're respectful of competing things that are happening downtown.
Okay, at this time, we'll open public comments. Are there any public speakers on this item? Margaret?
I don't have any speaker cards, but we do have one public commenter. Rod, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. On this item, I agree with Councilmember Mendoza. Events put a lot of strain on our resources, you know? They tend to make a mess and it's important to have people clean up after themselves. And I just think that having the application spell these things out is a good idea. I think this, this goes along with a, a prior item that was moved to consider spacing out the events on the parks. I think it was Councilmember Pearson that was, that had suggested maybe even cutting back on the, on the farmer's market a little bit, which is, I don't really agree with that. But I think it is important that we keep our downtown clean, that we let our, our visitors to our city see a clean city, that, you know, the parks aren't all trampled. And we could do a lot of good things with that. So, and again, just speaking because I have a right and I'm not afraid. And I'm sorry that you guys are. Thank you.
I have an additional speaker, Denise Duran.
I just wanted to touch base on this as well. And the chamber puts on several events throughout the year. And one thing that we have done in terms of being respectful and recognizing the importance of keeping our, our space clean is that we actually will work with somebody at Parks and Rec, go around with us at the event and from where our event was, so that there isn't a, oh, you didn't do, you know, oh, you kind of, you didn't do this space here, you know, you could do a little more work over here. We're actually getting basically a, a buy-off or a sign-off from Parks and Rec to show that we are doing our due diligence. And I also want to offer, thank you for bringing it forward and creating the opportunity to promote the other parks in the community that people can do events at. That's definitely something that the chamber is looking at incorporating in the coming year as well. Thank you.
I have no additional speakers.
Okay, at this time, we'll close public comments, move into council discussion.
So I think this is absolutely a great idea. If our special events doesn't, application doesn't have anything on specific, like, cleaning companies or that they are required to clean afterwards, I think, and specifically when I discussed, I, I don't think I ever said anything about shutting down our, our farmer's market. But I specifically said if people don't follow the rules, then they need to be shut down. So that's, that's what I said. And I still stand by that statement. So I think that we have to spell out what the rules are. So our application should absolutely include areas on there that, that, that speak to if there's, I, I don't know, maybe Mr. Mulder, you can tell, tell us. I know this came up before and I know that we had all, it had been agreed, and I think it's being worked on to come up with a specific maps for vendors. And, and I think you may have told us that the cleaning aspect is on the application, but is it on there? I think so.
Yes, we do have language in our permit that talks about the cleaning of the area after you have your event. So we do have that language in there. There would, there is, so I, I would suggest that this, these items could be folded into that special event process we're already working on. The one thing that's mentioned in here is it talks about a staff will review a map of vendors one month before the event. Practically speaking, when we work with our special event processes, a lot of times, event organizers are trying to get those vendors in place, pretty much right up to the last minute. So for them to have all of those 30, 30 days ahead of time and knowing where they're going to go, we have to have some flexibility with that, because our event organizers, a lot of times, just do not have that information planned that far ahead. But we can work with this and see what we can do to fold the information into the special event process. And I think the, one comment is, I think where Councilmember Mendoza is going is having the ability to look at vendors and clarify where they go, so that if we know ahead of time that there's certain businesses in town and there's vendors that might have competing types of uses towards that, that business, that we recommend that they go in other places. So I think that's, we can kind of fold that into the process to make sure that we're looking at that.
Yeah, I like the idea, thank you for that. I like the idea that if we can't control, because we're giving grace to them going up to the, almost the event, that we have a disclaimer that we reserve the right to have them move certain vendors, so that it doesn't infringe upon maybe a downtown Brentwood or anywhere in Brentwood, another business, something parking in front of there. So maybe we can add that to the application, some of our reservation of rights may be helpful. Instead of making that specific contingency that it's 30 days out, if that would hinder their ability to get additional vendors.
And that's what they, I think Oakley does that. Oakley, the person throwing the event, puts together the map, sends it to the city. The city then sends it to the businesses and they get a chance to review it. So yeah, but I think if they review it and you think it's, you know, it's not competing business, then that might work.
Yes, we can, we'll, we'll take a look at that and we'll fold it into our special event process that we're already working on.
When it comes to the cleanup, can we determine what a chargeback, like, how much money does it take if you show up the next morning and it's not clean? Like, we should probably look at that, because right now, there's no, I mean, what's the consequence if they don't clean up?
We can look at that cost recovery. The other thing is deposits for events are another thing that we can look at and then have to take some of their deposit if we need to, for damage or cleanup or things like that. So we can consider that part of it as well.
And we had always, we also had said, like, thing you don't get to do it next year, kind of thing, like, you get a year off or something, like, you know, and then hopefully the next time you do it, you clean up. But those are all things we can talk about when the event thing, like, how, how much do we want to do in that arena?
Yes.
Question? Oh, I didn't see which one. Okay.
I think we, we do need to make sure we're addressing the oversaturation of certain types of event in certain parts of the city. And, and I mean, we've talked about this before, like, spreading things around a little bit. But there, there very definitely does appear to be an oversaturation. So I'm hoping we're focusing on that. But I wanted to mention, in LUD, we went line by line into criteria for ranking grant applications for these events. And I think some of what we discussed at that time and some of, some of what we ranked higher or lower based on these kinds of discussions could be potentially helpful for this discussion. So I'm asking when it comes back, if we could have some, what that record was, what a ranking is, so that people, we can look at that and see how we could potentially work things into the conversation. And I'm looking at you, Darren, because you're, you were there.
I'm not sure if I'm understanding specifically what you said. That being said, I think there's some questions related to an event that occurred that received a grant. And I, I plan on providing an email with some information to you, and I can provide it to the entire council if that's what you're discussing.
It's not, but that will be helpful. We came up with criteria to rank grant applications. And I would like for all council to see that criteria.
Okay.
In case any of that could be helpful in incorporating into this conversation. Thank you.
Councilman Portmans?
I, I heard what you said about the, there's verbiage in there about the cleanup. I think it needs to be extremely specific, to the point of when the event is over and the cleanup is done, a staff member does the walkthrough and signs off on it. It can't, if we wait till the next day to go take a look at it, then what happened in the 12 hours since they left, they're being held responsible for, although they cleaned up the event. So it has to be that specific that it's going to be signed off by somebody that works for the city. What is the cost going to be to that, that entity? Should they not have cleaned it up and gotten it signed off? What's that going to cost the city? Especially if we're going to even think about telling them they can't come back for a year because it wasn't clean. So I, I think it has to be really specific. If we're going to put that much of a penalty on events, then we need to have, we're going to have to be that specific about making sure it's either done or not done.
Yes, we'll take a look at that and try to get that language as specific as possible, so it's clear.
That, that would sound like an amendment to this, though. I think it would be amending not only the special events application, but the process for reviewing special events after they're completed. Should be possibly changed. I, I don't know if that's going far and beyond, but...
What I was hearing as part of this discussion, if I understood it correctly, is that the Parks and Recreation Department is already working on the special events process that they're going to be bringing back to you. And it would be part of that overall work that they're doing, that you would include in their information about strengthening the special events application, making it clear what cleanup needs to, needs to be done. Also looking at the issues about competing vendors with brick and mortar. So I think, I think, if I heard it correctly, this would be coming back, you know, as a separate item, but as part of the overall work that they're already doing. And if I can get a nod from the Park and Rec Director, which I just got.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, do we have a motion on this item?
I will make a motion to request staff spend time and money to add to the work they're doing on special events, a garbage cleanup policy, the consequences of not following through with that policy, conflict of business type with the brick and mortar type, not being situated within a certain amount of area in front of that business, if that could be added as well to the work that you're doing now.
I second that motion.
I'm sorry, can we, do we need to add the part about potentially incorporating some of the LUD language for criteria? Or no?
I think we could talk about, I don't think it needs to be part of the policy.
Okay.
I think you're trying to move away, maybe it's not all of the items that go to LUD are going to involve a special event permit. So it starts to move away from what you're...
Fair enough.
Okay, we have a first and a second? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, it is unanimous. Moving on to I to F. Consider a request of September 12th, 2023, from Councilmember Mendoza regarding monitoring of council member time and requests of staff.
Yeah, so this one came up because I don't think I asked for a lot of ad hoc stuff. And I did ask for the water data points and garbage and all of that, and I got pushed back. And I know that other council people spend time with staff. And even if you're just sitting at their desk, that is using staff time, resources and money, because they get a paycheck. So I just, what is our policy around what time and money is okay and what time and money is not okay? Because if they're sitting in an office with you, that's time and money. So is it just because I work full-time and I can't come in during the day and I ask for my request at night? But it feels like when I ask for stuff, I get pushed back a lot. And it shouldn't be the ask, because time and money is time and money, whether I'm asking for data or you're just in the office hanging out, or you're at the police department hanging out, it's all the same. So I just, at this point, I just don't feel that it's equitable. And it should, I don't think this should have had to have come to council as a future agenda item. It's not that big of an ask. So I just, I don't know, I just want it to be equitable and I don't know how to do that.
This time, we'll open public comments. Turn it to you, Margaret.
I have one speaker. Rod, go ahead.
Thank you, Margaret. So I, I misread that, this was one that I actually had a real comment on. Not that those other comments weren't real. But, and I kind of misread this. I, I want the council to be aware that some of the challenges that you may encounter in dealing with some of these issues and working with staff also apply to us on the planning commission. So I read this as monitoring time and requests as future agenda items, in our case, that disappear for months at a time. And so that I would, I would respectfully request that the city council would, if, if policies are made towards staff relations with the council, those policies would also apply to the planning commission. And finally, for tonight, I would ask you, on your way out tonight, turn around and look at those flags behind you and think about all the brave people that died, died, so that they fought. War is not a great thing. They, they died so that you are public, had the First Amendment right to speak. And I don't think that you should let, I know, I know that for many of you, it's very, very hard to hear what those people said, it was hard for me. But that's just trash. That's all it is, is trash. And that's all the pay, all the, how much you should pay to it. Just cut their mic when they start. Once they've said any kind of legitimate comment they have, once they start talking the racial stuff or the Nazi stuff, just cut them off. And steel yourself, because you know what? You're alive, you're not dead. So you've got a lot of brave people sacrificed everything for you. You've got service families. We had people in here tonight. And so all I'm asking is that you keep the Zoom calls open and that if we have trash on those lines, that you bear it. Thank you.
Okay. We need to be consistent with regard to people speaking to the agenda item before, as, as we did, as we did that earlier tonight.
Okay, are there any further public comments?
I see no additional people who can speak.
At this time, we'll close public comments, move into council discussion on this item.
Go ahead. No, I just want, I just don't know, how do we make it equitable, since I can't come in during the day? Like, my requests, my help is all via, like, email. So how do we do that?
I'm not sure I can answer that question. I don't know. I think there may be a slight misperception on how much time I actually spend in city council or at the police department. Every event at the police department I go to, I'm invited. I don't just drop by and hang out at the chief's desk and talk about whatever. There are public events, there are events for retirements, there are events for officers that I would be going to whether I was on city council or not. These are friends of mine that I've known for years. I'm rarely in city hall unless I am doing an agenda review or something like that. So there may be a slight misperception that, that you've used the example that you're at the police department. I'm not there that frequently. And when I am, it's open to the public.
Yeah, I, I hear your frustration. I also think it's a misperception about me, too. I'm only going to my agenda review. And, and then if I have something specifically, I may text or email, so I'm doing the same thing that you're doing. So I, to Tim or any other, Damien, it's like a lot of text or email. I, I'm an attorney, I like to put things in writing. So most of my stuff is going to be that type of thing. You'll rarely see me, I, I don't have time to be here, or, you know.
Do you get responses, though?
I do. They are responsive, so I, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not getting responses on a lot of stuff.
So, so I get, I, I send emails, I send texts. They may not be like write-back, but eventually I do get a response from everybody. I mean, pretty much anybody I'm, I'm allowed to respond to. But I'm not sitting here. I mean, literally council agenda reviews is pretty much when you see me here, except when I have to do something personally, like go to something in here or I just want to walk through because I like-
Yeah, so maybe it's not in person, but I do feel like I get pushed back on my requests. And again, whether it's, you know, an email you send or a question you have, I don't feel like I get the same customer service from our city manager that other people get.
Yeah, and I would just, like a little thing I'll add to that too is, I think, I hear what you're saying. I think it would be hard to figure out who tracks when, what, where, all time. But I think you've publicly stated how you feel and what's happened and Tim's heard you and we've heard you. So if this is still occurring, I think there's something that should come back again. But I don't know how it's written. I just don't know how we track time.
No, so you know what I'll start doing? I'll just start keeping track of my asks and the ones that go unanswered and then we can talk about it in our quarterly meetings.
And also I think we do have the right to do things with one other council person. So I know that there are not, that Susanna is not, you know, Tony and I have traditionally just met because we were new council and it was, it's easier just to come together. We have that same standing time that we come to council review. But since you have someone else, if they're being sent out an email with one other cop, you have the right to have another council person copied on it.
Yeah, that's true.
And it doesn't violate the Brown Act, so.
Yeah, that's true. So, so yeah, so that's, that's kind of my thing. Right now I feel like I don't. I mean, I just emailed and it was during a council meeting, but I emailed a question about Hanson Lane. I still haven't gotten an answer back on it, right? And it's been a week. And it's, so, and I didn't expect the answer then and there, but it's been a week. And I'm like, so do I hound them? Do I not hound them? If I hound them, like, oh, there she is again, right? But it's like, then I have to wait to the council meeting and then I discuss it all at the council meeting, which you guys want the questions beforehand, but then I don't get answers, right? So.
Can I ask Tim a specific question for best practices? Is it best for us as council to directly send our questions to you that you can then funnel to your staff or to copy you on all requests? Or what would you, what would you think is the best practices to go ahead and go?
Sure. No, I think we have a pretty good working practice that if you send emails or inquiries related to operational issues, that is part of our day-to-day jobs, we respond. If it's related to a policy matter that does not yet have council direction, those are ones that we usually say, huh, this feels like a new agenda request. And to make sure we get full council consensus before we spend time and resource on it. And if there's some outstanding emails I haven't responded to, please let me know because they're not intentional. If you're emailing during a planning commission meeting and staff is busy working that meeting, they may not have responded. We can certainly follow up with you offline about why they're not responding to that email. And there's some policy language about letting the planning commission do their work and the city council to hear those things later. So we were actually trying to protect your interest in that matter when it comes back before the city council. So Alexis, I don't know if you want to clarify on that one as well?
Yes, so we will not be responding to council questions during planning commission meetings because we're busy running the meetings and you said you understand that. I do have a response to your Hanson Lane email, ready to go. I sent you two responses today to other emails. So we just got a lot in the pipeline right now and the Hanson Lane question's a little more, it was more in-depth and more complicated than, for example, the, you know, answers I sent you to your emails today. So that is in my queue. It's on my list and you will get that. And you're absolutely right. We do prefer questions ahead of time when the agenda items go to council because that helps us with the whole process and prepare and understand what the issues are. Maybe share information ahead of time or make sure our staff reports can reflect information that's important to the process. So you will be getting a response to that Hanson Lane email. I have not had a chance to send it yet.
Could I ask if it would be possible? It's kind of a redundant question. It's very helpful when a question is sent in that the acknowledgement of receipt, I got it. This is going to take more work or more time. I just want you to know, I got, I got it. We're on it. And then that way, if there's anything that happens that's, you know, more time than expected, you know, kick it along, make sure, hey, you know, make sure it's still in the queue. But having, having a response from staff, got it, is really, it's midnight. We're now a captive audience. But that would be very helpful across the board if just an acknowledgement of receipt, that might help some of this concern as well.
I think that would go a long way. Like I knew Katie had gotten it because she mentioned it last week, but I didn't even know if Alexis had gotten it, right? Because there was no like, got your email, I'm working on it or-
Yeah, it wasn't sent to me originally, so that's part of the issue.
It's Jennifer, right?
Yeah, it had to be forwarded to me. So anyway, understood. There's always room for improvement. I appreciate the feedback. I pride myself on getting back to council as soon as I can. And I think I do pretty consistently get back within a couple of days. That particular email because of how it got to me and got through the channel, I haven't gotten to yet and I will.
Okay, and then if I ask for something, like this, I mean, this is the latest one, but you know, it's just like, no, we're not going to give you that data. And I wish it had been like, we can't give you that data because it's a lot of time and money. You can make it an agenda item, right? It's like even me understanding exactly why the no is the no would be helpful because I feel like I just, I don't even like, I'm like, I just want to do some quick data work. Like it's, I mean, to me that's not a lot. And I know, I mean, to you it is, to me it's not. So it's, I didn't understand the no. I didn't and it's just, I don't know. It's just, yeah, it's like, hey, I can't, we can't do it or we can do it. And if you want to get it done, this is the avenue to get it done.
If you're referencing a specific request, there was a very long detailed email response from me about that. So I can forward that to the whole council, but I did give the why and the reasons why it was more difficult. We did give some data that took a little bit of time. 20,000 accounts according to utility billing was going to take several hours. And again, the outcome of that work effort on your part, I couldn't do anything with. It would require the consultant to come peer review it. It would require the council direction to either lower or raise the water rate. So again, that's a future agenda request every time. It wasn't about withholding data from you. It was about following a process to get council direction.
Okay.
And we've gotten that now and we'll be working on it.
Okay, but it's just, I guess the response was, I get a diatribe instead of like, okay, if you want it, this is what we're going to do. You know, this was what it takes. That's all I need. I don't need to, I feel shamed into asking for something. Like, because I feel like if you read the emails you send me, it's like every single time I am just like, I'm this person who just asked for too much or, you know, does this and that. But if I'm going to make a decision on a diocese, it needs to be the most educated decision. And now I'm even afraid to ask for things, which then makes my decision-making not as good as it should be. So, I mean, it doesn't need to be in a future agenda item. We will try the receipts. We'll see if that works and we can go from there. And I'll just keep track of things and then we can talk about it quarterly.
Okay, do we need a motion on this item? No? Okay. So we have reached the final component. And before, before we do, I want to thank our community that was here. Everyone that received the acknowledgements that they did, the seniors that took all their time and energy to come down and let us know about their concerns. And everyone that came down specifically to speak in public comments, do appreciate that as well. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Okay, we have a first.
I second, sorry. I think I fell asleep.
Are we going to split the adjournment tonight? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned. Thank you.